Good morning, councillors and public. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, the fourteenth of March. And I would like to call the meeting to order at nine thirty-one. And start the meeting with our traditional land acknowledgement. I'd like to acknowledge that Jasper National Park and municipality of Jasper are on treaty six and eight territories, as well as maybe region four. This land is a traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route and home with the Denze, Neha Waiuk, Anishanabi, Sedwetnik, Stony Nakota, and Meti. The municipality of Jasper acknowledges the land of these territories, the honor of the relationship indigenous people have with this land, to remind us of our responsibility and obligations to this place and to indigenous peoples, and to affirm our accountability to address the ongoing impacts of colonization that continue to affect indigenous peoples. Councillors, you have the agenda for today in front of you. I would like to call for any additions to the agenda. Councillor Demora.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. I don't have an addition, but I would like to propose moving some agenda items around. I would like to start with moving seven point four to seven point one and seven point three to seven point two. And the reason I'm making this is because I think that there's some healthier discussions to be made on this and considering timelines of other initiatives. I think that this should take priority now while we're fresh and I find that a lot of times in the afternoon after lunch or whatever it may be, we start to hit meeting fatigue and I think that when we're considering debate for the greater community as a whole, I believe that these agenda items could be moved forward. And this is my proposal. And I'd like to move that forward.
Thank you, Councillor Demora. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. Although we haven't yet confirmed a reordering of the new business under agenda item seven, if that is to happen, I was in any event concerned about agenda item seven point six and I would be prepared to have that deferred to a future meeting. I have to leave early today to get to an appointment in Edmonton. I do wish to speak to that, but it's not urgent. So I would be prepared to move to page that agenda item seven point six simply be deferred until the next committee of the whole meeting. Which I understand we might be challenged for quorum on March twenty-eighth, but regardless, it's not an urgent item, so it can be dealt with at that time.
May your worship. Are there any other additions or changes, Councillor Wilson?
Just to speak to those two items there, it sounded that seven point six, there is a reason to bump it up or I don't see why striking it off this week's agenda would. I'm not in support of like ranking the agenda items as we see are more important than or not important. So by moving those up in the agenda, it's kind of saying, well, these are more important than the other ones. So I'm not really in support of that, but also wanted to ask Mr. Given, is there, are you presenting the JCHC or is there colleagues in way your colleagues are fully invited to help us with that?
Yeah, thanks very much, Councillor Wilson. So five point one, we have as delegation, it's update just for information. We have two consultants that are here to present a bit of an overview of what the business planning process is going to look like. And I believe they're on.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson. Councillor Demora.
I have a question for administration through you Deputy Mayor Melnick to Mr. Given. Would putting paid parking before S block parking affect the discussion at all as far as what needs to be decided on or are they put in order in that way to have one debated before the other?
Through Deputy Mayor Melnick for Councillor Demora, I think it's kind of irrelevant. They're somewhat similar. They both deal with pieces of flat land and vehicles that move around and park on the flat land, but other than that, I don't think that they're directly tied. So I don't be sure that it really matters one way or the other.
Well, I think some of the decisions maybe or considerations to council there to have that one before, because I feel that maybe the decisions made or recommendations to council made might affect one over the other, depending on how it rolls out. And the only other question I have is, do you have somebody on deck for us to speak to the climate resiliency capacity building project and would be delaying that affect someone's availability online for us?
Yeah, thanks, Councillor Demora. Through Deputy Mayor Melnick, we do have staff members that are prepared to present on that. So you can have them online as long as we need to. Staff is here at council's pleasure and we're happy to serve. As I said earlier, we're here through A to Z of the meeting or Z to A, however council wants to take it.
Are there any other comments from councillors or any other changes? Staying none, I would like to also add a discussion on March twenty-eighth, the quorum and chair. And that would be a very last item. So I'm going to propose the following. That the, from what I'm understanding, paid parking will become seven point one, S block will become seven point two. I'd like to have climate resilience, the resiliency of seven point three as the staff members, I believe, waiting in the wings. Your worship, seven point four, if we can get to it, a better living wage, and if not, we can defer. Seven point five will be the joint use planning agreement. Seven point six councillor, fellow MP, are you in favor of that? In that position?
That's fine. It's just there as a placement order, little big discussion.
Right, thank you. And seven point seven, I'd like to, as I say, propose a discussion on the quorum and chair for March twenty eighth, just to make sure it's on our radar. If there are no other changes to our agenda, I would like to have a motion to approve the agenda as revised. Councillor Demora. All those in favor? And that's carried. Now we have to have the approval of the or the minutes of the February twenty-eighth committee of the whole, which were approved on February twenty-first. Are there any business arising from those minutes? Seeing no indication from councillors. And we, and receive these, this for information since it was approved at the February twenty-first meeting of council. All those in favor? Carry. Moving on to item number five, and we have from the colleagues, we have a presentation on the Jasper Community Housing Corporation. Chetak Shah, sorry, and Jake Dean are with us via Zoom and Mr. Given, do you want to do an introduction?
Sure, I'll just do a bit of brief context setting before I turn it over to Deputy councillor who basically gave direction to administration to develop a business plan and incorporation documents for a municipally controlled corporation to transform the JCHC into an MCC, that's short for municipally controlled corporation. So we've had two action items out of that. We have legal representation working on the corporation documents. And the colleagues is assisting us in developing a business plan. Both of those are requirements that we'll bring back to you for consideration. So again, this is not decision making. The update that we have for you today is a bit of a informational update about how the process is going and what's going to be happening on the business planning side. So this is the start of that follow-up to your direction to us to develop a business plan. And the colleagues is going to guide us through what they see that process looking like and how it's going to roll out over the next few months. So I'll turn it over to Chet and Jake, our team from Colliers.
Great. Thank you very much. And apologies in advance. I'm battling a bit of a cold. So if I cough in the middle here, I apologize in advance. So as Bill kind of mentioned, we're, we're getting going on the business plan. And we'd like to just take the next five or 10 minutes just to walk you through where we are, kind of the cadence of activities and some of the key touchpoints that you'll see over the next couple of months. Jake, do you want to start with setting a bit of context and providing a bit of a review of the work that we've done to date, leading up to this point? And then I'll take it forward.
Yeah, absolutely. So to give you a little bit of background, recognizing the housing shortage in Jasper, particularly around affordability, Jasper established the Jasper Community Housing Corporation, the JCHC in two thousand and seven in response to these affordability challenges and recognizing that tourism is a prevalent industry within the community. Housing shortages limits economic development and sustainability of the community. So addressing this shortage was a strategic priority of council as well as municipal staff. Last year in two thousand and twenty-two, Colliers, we completed the governance review, which essentially looked at how to improve and expand the housing supply in Jasper, particularly around affordability in the role in governance of the JCHC moving forward to address these gaps. So for the governance review, what it described the future state of housing over the next 20 years. So the projections were up to two thousand and forty-two. We developed a high level roadmap to get there. And then we identified, defined and evaluated delivery model options, looking at, you know, public, private, private, public, solely private and solely public. And from there, we recommended an operational and governance structure for the JCHC or an alternative housing vehicle moving forward to address these affordable housing issues. So moving to today, this business plan, the approach that we're taking is to empower the JCHC, building off of the governance review that we completed to expand the JCHC's capabilities, allowing them to formally partner financing, constructing housing developments in Jasper, as well as be the owner and operator of existing municipal assets. And to do so, as Bill mentioned, we'll be standing up a municipally controlled corporation. We're working with the lawyer that's been retained by Jasper to set up an MCC. And where Colliers comes in is we'll be developing the business plan, which will be ratified through council at a later date.
Okay. Yep, next slide, please. So just to, just to set a bit of cadence on, on the different steps that we're going to be taking from now and our projected finalization towards the end of June, we're, we're kind of in this green bucket on the left here, project initiation. We're going to be quickly moving into the collection and validation of data that's going to include some key interviews and some key workshops with staff and stakeholders to kind of get an understanding of the functional requirements of the MCC now and in the future. And then we'll kind of move into the blue buckets that, you know, although they're separated here, are a little bit organic and it is around setting the template of what needs to be included in a business plan, the different categories and the different sections that need filling out. And then we'll move into the dark blue bucket where we'll start inputting data as we get kind of early June-ish. And then Jake, if you want to get to the next slide, this is just a little bit more of a deep dive into our work plan. As you see, we're, we're still in one point two right now, which is we're developing a project plan. I think that's actually over to Bill and Leanne as of yesterday to look at, but so we're a little bit ahead of schedule, which is great. I think as we move into number two, my apologies, as we move into number two, this is where the meat of our work begins and we will start really starting to, start to mine the important data and the important inputs that we will need to populate the business plan and it will kind of form an understanding of the existing assets and what we think about some of the future assets and how that fits into a business plan framework in coordination with John, the lawyer that Jasper retained. And we have a projected finalization date for the business plan towards the end of June. But there'll be many touch points kind of in between now and then as we evolve the document. This is just a summary of what we just talked about. We're now in week two again and where project plan is in the hands, in the capable hands of Bill and Leanne. And so we'll look for some feedback and start, start into our interviews and workshops in the next week or so. Thanks. Questions?
Councillors, are there any questions for Chetak or Jake? Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. Through you two, the presenters, I I'm just curious as to the timing of the actual incorporation. So as I understand the report, prior to incorporation as a municipally controlled corporation, we need a business plan. Once the business plan has been ratified, we can move forward, but on that fifteen week schedule, I don't actually see a line for incorporation. Is it sort of a four point, four point five item? Once we've approved the business plan, then we can file for incorporation?
Maybe, Your Worship, I'll handle that one if that's okay Deputy Mayor Melnick. So to be clear, Colliers engagement is focused solely on the development of the business plan. We do have a presentation, corporation agreement and shareholder structure and all those other items. And for both of our external consultants, their work is to develop those items. And then it's up to council to decide whether you wish to actually move forward. So you won't see incorporation on the schedule because it really is subject to council decision-making. None of this is a foregone conclusion that we will actually convert to an MCC. Council needs to review all this information, be satisfied in the context of a public hearing, a public meeting, that it's the right course of action. So you won't see that on the schedule per se. That would be following, following council's decision-making review of the documents that have been announced. So that's why you don't see it on this schedule, Your Worship.
If I may then, through you Deputy Mayor Melnick to Mr. Given, is there anything that we can be doing now to be better positioned, assuming that we might ratify a business plan produced by Collier, to be in a position to move to incorporation without any further delay? Are there concurrent steps that we can be taking with respect to the municipal municipally controlled corporation, incorporation at this time, so that we're not starting over later?
Through Deputy Mayor Melnick, in terms of concurrent steps, there are, there are two processes that are happening at the same time. And there is interaction between the two. So Colliers working on that business plan and concurrently legal work is at setting up the incorporation documents is happening through our legal team. If this presentation was from Brownlee, our lawyers that we engaged for that side of the work, they would be able to show where we'd be in a position of corporate. But there is a legislative requirement under the MGA for council to view all this information before packaging. And so as administration, you don't have that abilities to make any steps that, that suggest that this is a predetermined outcome. We need to develop all the information presented to you. And administration is working to develop the information so that it is a ready-to-go package, if you will. So that if and when council decides it's the right course of action, after you've reviewed everything, that we'll be able to hit go quite quickly. And so if I was to speculate a bit, which is maybe always a little dangerous, but you know, if council is satisfied with the business plan and the proposed incorporation structure at the end of June, I would imagine that by the end of summer, we could have the incorporation at least filed and submitted. I won't make a comment about how quickly we'd get that returned. You probably know, Your Worship, better than I would. But, you know, administration doesn't see that as a long process from our end, because everything will be essentially turnkey and just waiting on council approval.
Thank you. Councillor Demora.
Well, I don't really have any questions and I'm not patting council on the back, but I'm very grateful that this is before us in the fashion that it is. And I do want to commend administration for getting this going in this direction. And I am very appreciative. I love having this structure in front of us, having timelines and understanding, being involved. Early on, there's always been a whirlwind of markets and stakeholders and needs in the community. And I'm very satisfied with what's in front of us and having some structure and understanding and then, you know, hopefully in the end, having a good idea of what we need and how we're going to go forward doing it. And without that structure, I think it would have been taking us a lot longer of a time to get things accomplished. So congratulations to everybody and I'm really looking forward to seeing this roll out. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Demora. Are there any other questions for our presenters? If I see no questions, I believe we need a motion to accept the presentation for information. Councillor Demora.
I move that committee received the Jasper Community Housing Business Plan Project Overview as given.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. And thank you both to Chetak and Jake. Appreciate the presentation and we look forward to receiving an update from you over the next number of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
So our next item is number six correspondence. I do not have any correspondence. I Mr. Given, we have no correspondence on the agenda. Then takes that to our revised agenda, item seven point one, and that is paid parking.
Absolutely. I want to just have some clarity here and Councillor Wilson had pointed out that maybe we might be prioritizing importance. If the term or word important came out of my mouth, I didn't intend that. I just found that we have some recommendations coming forward and things that might be easier to move forward than having, you know, later on in the day than having, you know, our focus to be on a bigger issue, which I'm not saying is more important than the other. I just found it be, I'll tell you for us to tackle this a little bit earlier.
Thank you. Mr. Nodden, pardon me, Mr. Nodden, what you're presenting?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick. This is the second time this item is in front of committee of the whole, simply because we had quorum, but just at the last meeting. So we thought, we know this is an important topic in the community and wanted to give it the exposure it needs. And you'll see the report is substantially the same as it was two weeks ago, with the exceptions of the recommendations. So we've, in discussion with Mr. Given, we've clarified that, well, our administrative recommendations are still the same, but in terms of the motions for council to consider, the first bullet that committee recommend council convert the upper McCready Center parking lot to resident parking only and increase the parking lot or off-street rates to three dollars an hour. Those, those are the only two changes to the program for two thousand and twenty-two that we are recommending. And that's why we isolated them in their own recommendation. And then followed by the second recommendation, which is that committee direct administration to modify the resident permit program to a one-time registration process and maintain all other two thousand and twenty-two program parameters. So our recommendations are still listed as they were previously on the second page of the report. And that captures everything we are planning to or recommending that council support moving forward. But the only items that we need motions on are the ones where there are changes from two thousand and twenty-two. Having that said, the information on the rates for S block was a question that was raised last time. So that's why we brought that up in a separate report. Initially, we tried to put it into the paid parking information, but then quickly realized it's a topic onto itself. So that's why that came in a separate report. And otherwise, as I mentioned, the information is substantially the same. Administration is looking to run the program in a similar fashion as we had in two thousand and twenty-two for a variety of reasons. But mainly to let us gain experience with the program, improve in the areas where we need to spend a bit more time developing specific pieces of the program and also just to get a smooth and positive experience for everyone involved. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nodden. Councillors, any questions for administration? Mayor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick through you two. I suppose Miss Nodden, but it might go back to Hot Spot ultimately. I know in the report I read somewhere that the best thing to do is try and understand this stuff is to look at the dashboard material. And I struggling with how to interpret it, interpret some of that information. So appendix A that's attached. With one exception, which is the monthly statistics were made as I think an outlier. In every case, off-street parking maximums eclipse on-street parking. And that happens every month, as I say, except May, and it happens every day of the week. And yet the suggestion is that there is no difference and that we should equalize rates. But it seems to me, reading this dashboard, that the off-street parking is more heavily used. And that accords with our intent, I think, is that we structured this originally with a lower rate for parking lots in the hope that people would park there and leave the on-street parking for quicker turnover to accommodate what some businesses see as their being for quicker turnover. And the way I read those statistics, that has worked. And yet the recommendation is that it doesn't make any difference and we should equalize the rates. And then nothing will change. But I, I struggle to read that in in those documents. So I don't know whether you can speak to that at all, whether we should ask Hot Spot, what their interpretation of that data is. But that's my reading.
Councillor, Mr. Nodden, you want to turn to Mayor, of course?
I will endeavor. Thank you Deputy Mayor, Mayor Melnick. Mayor Arlen, I had to look at specifically which piece of data you might be referring to. And I'm thinking you're looking at maximum occupancy. So on page fifty-seven on the agenda, I guess you did say appendix A, so that would make sense. I think the, the times and the days where the, where the parking inventory is busy and also the months, so July and August being clear outliers. So the volume and occupancy in July and August is well beyond any other month. So that's a clear trend there. And I think what you're seeing, the maximum occupancy might have been reached, might have been reached for an hour that month or that day or that, depending which, which way you're looking at it. So I don't know that it's a strong indicator of what's happening day in, day out, so for twelve hours a day, which, which the program is in operation. But certainly I think the, the recommendation of matching the rates for parking lots came from the fact that mainly the two lots on Kanot, so be in the public washrooms lot and the other one, that is the four hundred block, see the highest occupancy of all parking lots. And we think See the highest occupancy of all parking lots, and we think that that's just generally because of their geographic location where you drive into town, you see them and people park immediately. Explains why those two lots specifically are more. In use and in that context, that's where the the recommendation that increasing the raise on those will probably not change the outcomes. In terms of utilization, because people, it's the first parking lot they see, they'll just park there anyway. Was the observation there. But then in terms of max occupancy, I think there's a bit of, like, that could have been a one time, one hour of one day that it reached. A seventy nine or eighty three percent max occupancy is not numbers that we're seeing on street or in very many other places. For any extended period of time. So it's a peak, but whether it's representative of the twelve hour usage is a is a different consideration.
So as a part, I'm going to go to Mr. Given. And then I'm going to go to Counselor Demora.
Yeah, just to add to that, you know, I think the other thing that I would take. From the data here and around my recommendations that, you know, we are seeing good utilization of off street parking, which is one of the goals. It shows that we have, you know. Pretty frequently. Good availability, according to the data of on street parking. And I think it's just that where there's high demand. For a high utilization, you can probably sustain a higher rate. You know, and so we're having relatively high utilization of the off street parking. That's great, which we want them to be. And we could probably. Manage to. Better monetize that space. Through an increased rate without significantly damaging or or shifting the the weight to the on street parking. I think that's what the data is saying here. That's that's at least how I interpret it. And that's why administration is is bringing this recommendation forward for council consideration that. A unified rate makes it easier for parkers to understand. And it doesn't, it appears that those off street lots are in high demand. And so they could probably support that higher rate and increase the revenue from the program.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Counselor Demora.
Well, I'm grateful for the astute observation of the mayor. And, you know. I think that it, looking at it from a different angle. When I was initially looking at maximum occupancy, I wasn't really paying attention to the percentage because I figured more vehicles in a bigger area are going to have higher numbers, but. If, you know, contrary to to what Director Nedon was saying, and it's. Nothing against you. It's just a matter like, let's take August for an example. I believe that would be based on thirty one days of use. And if you look at the off street, let's just say it's double from the on street. So off street. It maxed out. At five o'clock. In the evening at forty six percent. However. At eight o'clock at night. The. Major parking lots or the parking lots in time maxed out at eighty three percent. So to me, I'm getting the same interpretation as Mayor Ireland. In that regard, so I would like to have a better understanding. What those breakdowns actually mean, and if that has to come back from curve IQ. Then, you know, getting more information to help us make those decisions on on rate increases because I think. The higher rate on the street, from my perception, is achieving the goal of what we intended in. I'm not saying that I don't want to increase the rates because I'm into maximizing our revenues. For the community because we've seen the benefit. However, I want to make sure that we're making the best decision on the information that we have. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Counselor Keller.
I do believe a number of. Guests that come to town take the car can outs, but simply because on street we're two hours. They come, they're going on train tours, they want to remake, they'd be on hiking tours, they're doing the food tours. So those tours all go three to five hours. So just working in my own job, I get a number of calls daily from people saying, well, where can I park? I'm going on this tour. I always direct them to parking lots because we can park there all day. Park there for twenty four hours if we need to. Okay. So I think that is also, we're seeing a number of visitors. That becomes the one who park for more than you are.
Thank you, Counselor Keller and P. Counselor Hunt.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I also wonder if residents in the evening with their vehicles back into those parking lots and that might close numbers. I know a lot of people living downtown are in apartments might. Utilize those lots. Just a couple of comments that I question. So we, in the end, almost. Our revenue was almost six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is amazing since we forecasted six seventy five. That's great. I wasn't at last committee meeting, but I did tune in and I do agree with Counselor Waxer's point that if we're going to raise parking lots, I wonder if we should be raising the premium. Downtown parking as well. Is a pretty, it is pretty spot. And I think there should be a difference. And if we're raising it to three in the lots and we raise the day rate to eighteen, or will it stay at twelve? I wonder if that should be a consideration as well. That's all for now. Oh, my question, sorry. This is for Director Nedon. Can you explain to me in the table with term if options, financial impact? Year round parking, twenty five increase, five point five K decrease. What is? I'm just confused on that little box.
Ms. Nedon.
Counselor Hall, through to Deputy Mayor Melnick. So what is contemplated here, the term being a seasonal program as opposed to a year round program? And then, so the information we got from Hotspot and Curve IQ is that if we were to implement paid parking in the winter months, so based, I think, on the October occupancy is what they use. The potential revenue increase would be twenty five thousand dollars. So in the grand scheme of the changes that could be made to the program and what type of revenue would generate. It it's one of the lower revenue generating options, and then the decrease would be staffing costs for the operations department. So seasonal, they have to put up the signs in the spring, take it down in the fall. So there would be savings there. So additional. Thirty point five. K would be the the net impact.
Thank you for that. Counselor Wilson.
My question is regarding the McGrady Upper Parking Lot, and I think the recommendations to make it resident only. What would be the encouragement or what would encourage residents to use this when they already have free parking everywhere? Why not make this a free parking lot so everybody can use it, such as the Quacks or the Academy Center? So, you know, if we if it encourage usage, well, and then that one's not being used as well. Why give it to residents when they already have free parking? Why not make it free for for everyone?
Ms. Nedon, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to Counselor Wilson. I think just the close proximity of that parking lot to the paid parking zone, if we were to turn it to a free parking, simply free for everyone. Could have an impact on the revenue that we generate in the zone. So if you can park for free somewhere really close to where you have to pay to park, then it could potentially have an impact on. Our revenue in the actual zone was, I think, that and that statement is applicable to both parking lots at the McGrady Center. None of them saw a lot of use, but if we turn them to free parking for everyone, then. There's a good chance it'll decrease our revenue in the paid parking zone, if that makes sense. And. So the the purpose of turning it to a resident parking only would would be a bit of a. Of an encouragement or of a of a place for residents to go if you live further out in the community and you want to drive and park close to downtown to then walk downtown to go to your place of work or or something like that. It's kind of the intent there, but. Eliminating parking lots is also not an option, right? So anything other than turning it to just free parking, which could negatively impact the revenue, is the recommendation.
Thank you for that, Counselor Demora.
Well, I I like the recommendation only because I. When I rode my bike to work, which was often in the summertime, I went through both those parking lots, the upper and lower like greedy to to get to my work. And the upper parking lot was very rarely used. It was empty for most of the summer, and I think that if we encouraged. Residents to park there, that might keep them from, you know, taking up some spots on the main. On the main streets where our revenue is generated, thus creating more revenue for visitors by not taking up those spots. So to me, if if we're going to in in promote. You know. Walking in the community and people have to drive, I think that's a good stopping point and. Area for for residents to park and then maximize the use of that area because, you know, it's meaningful for me to watch that thing be empty. All year round. So if we can find a way to to fill that up and then maximize our revenues elsewhere, I think would be a good exercise. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Demora. Many, many of the questions or questions I had. Were asked, but I would like to. Make note of. The removal modification of maximum time limit on page fifty six, which also. Was a little charge. That was presented. As a option for twenty twenty three. To increase your on street maximum time limit to three hours. And I notice that that's not in the recommendation. Is there a rationale that I'm missing? Which is in one part of the report, it says we should go to three hours. But we're not including that as part of the recommendation, recommend recommended changes. Ms. Nedon.
Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor Melnick. This was an option that was raised by Curve IQ by looking at our data for the for parking for twenty twenty two and essentially suggesting that. People that park on street for two hours. And to to near that max time, like they they actually stay for close to the duration of the the maximum time limit that they could stay there. So if we were to increase. The time limit to three hours, there's a potential that people would. The demand might be there to sustain a longer time limit for people to stay there. However. The reason it didn't make it into administration's recommendations for twenty twenty three is that. Encouraging turnover was our understanding of one of the goals that council had with the on street paid parking downtown. So increasing the limit to three hours sort of goes against that. Also, the potential ten thousand dollar increase in revenue, we thought was relatively minimal in the context of. Other changes that could be made to the program that would. Yield bigger increases in revenue. And then another item that is not contemplated in the report, but that is quite operational and in real in nature, is that we would need all new regulatory signs if we were to change the time limit from two hours to three hours. So it is possible. But I don't have the data with me, but there would be a cost to replacing all of our regulatory signs. So the white sign with the green circle around the P. Those would all have to change to. Maximum three hours. So there for a potential ten K increase, I'd say we're probably looking at a five K in signage. So it's just not really something that we. Were comfortable recommending, also in the general context of. Keep as many parameters the same as they were as in twenty twenty two to get us some experience with the program. And so we have good data to compare year over year.
Thank you for that. Counselor Wilson and Counselor Hall.
I'm apprehensive to scrap the credit system, I think, and I I understand there was challenges and, you know, was it being used, was it not? I don't know, but. Well, in part, we had, we I I I thought, let's do this because we then had the ability to reduce credits. Year after year to try and build better habits of locals to reduce their vehicle use within the community and and use alternative methods to. To get downtown. So that's the only kind of tool I find that we can actually. Use to. Change habits currently. I hope that administration has some better ideas in order to enact a transportation study. I think I'll I'll kind of back off on the on pushing for the credits now, but or or keeping the credits, but I hope. That study is going to kind of bring like some initiatives we can do. Or enable to reduce. Vehicle traffic from residents and and, you know, increase. Alternative modes of of transport in our in our community.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just to continue on Counselor Wilson's credit conversation. I do also like the credit system. It's a good way to keep track. However, that was the biggest complaint I heard from residents because the user really, and they can just park. Register once and park downtown for their two hours. I don't, I don't know if that might be easier. It was a pilot project. I really hope there was, and as we get on board and furthering with us and trying to figure out the best way to make this work. But again, it was the biggest complaint. I I agree. We're deciding this, I know. Might be. cumbersome. I'm not sure. My question, though, again, I'm not sure if this was brought up at last committee, but the the two hotels that are downtown that use the parking lots, were they able to buy? Parking for their guests? I I feel like it was talked about at last committee, but again, I wasn't here.
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to Counselor Hall. I I Director Malochek has been closely involved with that program as well, so I'll let her speak to it as well. My understanding is that we had one hotel. In the central business district that took part in the program and. The principle was that the front desk clerk would put in the license plate of the guest as they checked in. So that electronic process taking place directly with hotspot and then in live time becoming available for enforcement purposes for officers. Is the the premise of how that works. I think there were a few challenges with. The time limits. So as Counselor Keller MP mentioned earlier, you have to park in a parking lot if you're going to stay for more than two hours, right? So that communication item, making sure that that's cleared. And then Director Malochek's been dealing directly with the businesses that were taking part in the program and the billing and the financial aspects. And so she can provide more information on that front. And and I think the question was asked at the last committee meeting. We do have a program. It could be expanded to include other properties. And maybe I'll let Ms. Malochek speak to it from here, or if there's another specific question.
Director Malochek, why don't we go to you then to Counselor Keller MP and Counselor Demora.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I believe that Ms. Nedon, sorry, Ms. Nedon had covered mostly all that was involved. It was a contract that's held between hotspot and. The hotel themselves. The municipality was reimbursed for the portion of the payment. And I don't have the direct figures at hand, but they are achievable if I have time to dig. But, yeah, it was, I think, the biggest, as Ms. Nedon had suggested, the biggest problem was the two hour on street. Because there's not always somewhere in the parking lots, but. It it was. Had to be and had to be a communication item between the the front desk clerk and the guest so that they understood that we had a bylaw that would. Enable on potential tickets should they go over those two hours. So that being said, I think otherwise, things went quite well. There were obviously some wrinkles to iron out, but. As with the whole program itself, it was new to us, so we had to figure some things out as we went along.
Thank you for that. Counselor Keller.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Melnick, I just also, I did notice when I was downtown a lot last year, even myself, the scanners didn't work. They were dirty. They got. They don't have sand or anything on them. They didn't work and I. As I said last, two weeks ago, one of the things that I found the hardest was to see seniors. Go there trying to do it with their phones. Didn't work. And, you know, they're on a walker and I know a lot of them came and God passes, but some didn't. Because they had phones and they tried it, but I didn't know. And one of the biggest complaints I got was, well, the top technology don't work or I don't have that. And I think, you know, when I was in our, like, it was amazing, like, in my hometown, it's not a tourist town, like, everywhere you went, there was paid parking, but you were to plug in, you're lonely or you're charming. Pay for it, and we don't have that option. Everything is either electronic, and I think for a lot of our seniors. Plus, I was one of the ones that gave out the wrong information last year because I thought once you register, that bylaw would scan you and then or that it just automatically get deducted from your points. And I think some residents saw that as well. And. So I think, you know, I think, as you said, Counselor Wilson, down the road, it will come up with another program for that. And my second one, I just want to talk to you about the hotel downtown. One of the complaints I got last year from one of the operators was that. The um, parking lot across from one of our hotels is free. And we don't have a lot of parking there, so why can they access that their guest access that parking lot? And not have to pay, and I'm wondering that, I'm not saying that, you know, the uh, parking lots downtown. Should be um, free to the hotels, but I'm wondering if we can come up with a reduced rate. For the hotel guests, so because they're collecting the money. They're uh, getting in front of the guests that we're meeting, and just maybe we could have um, a special price. For our hotels for their guests. Just.
Um, and just before you go to Counselor Demoto, I'm just giving you a follow-up for Counselor Keller MP.
Well, at at for on one of the points Counselor Keller MP raised, that I think important for councils awareness as well broadly, because I think it touches on a few of these issues first. Uh, general ease of use of the system, and particularly as related to a couple of the off-street lots that are located close to hotels. Uh, administration has already budgeted for uh, three additional uh, in-person pay stations. So there will be three additional stations, council, remember, we were taking sort of a, and he's in a program and buying a whole bunch of stations and putting them in the wrong places. Uh, we're buying those stations as we see where the demand is, and so we have three stations, they're coming, so I don't think it'll a lot easier, it'll be additional location for residents, the. And visitors that are more comfortable paying with a card, uh, or physical sort of media that way, uh, can do so, so we'll be able to put those in most priority locations. And I think it's likely that some of those priority locations would be at the off-street lots that are adjacent to hotels, so there's another opportunity. That provides another method uh, for people to interact with the system. Uh, and that's already in works, and it isn't necessarily mentioned or reported, the council should be aware that's happening as well.
Thank you for that, and I'm going to go to Counselor Demoto.
Thank you. Well, uh, a lot of these, this, this, covering some of the topics I wanted to cover, because I had a pretty healthy list here, so. Uh, if you bear with me, I'll just say that, um, in our last, um. Community conversations at the adult. Area, we had our C and P members present, and uh, when I brought up the paid parking in the community. Their biggest comment was confusion of visitors, and they were a target. Uh, to for information when people were looking how to pay, when they couldn't make their thing uh, work, and um. They didn't make a recommendation from the sense of the conversation is, uh. More kiosks would be helpful, so I would even say that we should add four more new ones. Um, to recruit some of that revenue, because some people just didn't pay or just, you know, gamble. Uh, so the biggest comment from them was the amount of people that were looking on how they could pay, like people wanted to pay. And they just, there was a lot of confusion in the community of of getting them to the right spots. So that's just me making that comment. Um, as far as the hotels go. I understand there is only one hotel that doesn't have any parking available to them, and um. From my experience and knowledge of that particular spot, um, they were grandfathered in when it came to the. Parking requirements in the community, because when that hotel was built, it was before, um. Cannot drive was officially constructed and the matter is now, so with the parking available across the street. I think that, um, we might be providing an unfair advantage to other hotels, because when, um, uh, my understanding is that. When people go to reserve and they find that they have to pay for parking, it becomes a deterrent for them. And I think that maybe we should come up with a program that's similar to the resident passes for, um, the. Um. Visitor passes that are available for the approved accommodations on cannot drive and in the downtown core. Where maybe we can have X amount of passes available to that. Particular establishment that matches their amount of rooms they have, and that's all they get, and then have another payment plan similar to other hotels in the in the community, if if they want to. Have more stalls on top of that available to their guests, because I I think that in. By all fairness, like we do with with the residents who have a group to combination. We should have a similar, um. Program for uh, that business that seems to be affected. By parking in our community, by they they park, and it's not, because I think that we owe them many favors or the community owes them favors, it's just the predicament of. How their business was established in the manner that it is and where it is. So, and then, uh, having said that, um, in regards to the resident passes, I'm I'm for the recommendation here. I think, um, for monitoring purposes, it takes up too much time of our staff. And that causes too much stress and confusion for residents, uh, of any age, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demoto. Looking around the room, are there any other comments? I um, I would like to. Thank Mr. Given for confirming that these three of the kiosks are on the way. And I would go along with Counselor Demoto's recommendation, as to get them that we have made it for, that would be the better. Uh, to capture revenues. Uh, are there any other? Makes of discussion here, uh, or any other questions that were in, Counselor Demoto?
Yes, actually, I do have a question for administration, and uh, it's. Is an observation of a couple of ghost zones, and I think it's it's a zone that I'm referring to that is on cannot drive. And it's from uh, Hazel, I believe, uh, in between Hazel and uh, in front of like. Uh. The resident area, first of all, going uh, westbound. So in front of. The S O station. There, it's in between residential and the paid parking zone, and I found that last summer, a lot. Of visitors were discovering that, and I saw repeat customers throughout the summertime, uh, taking advantage of those spots, including across the street where it would be. Directly in front of our underpass, um, those are ghost zones in in between. And I think that maybe we're missing out on an opportunity for revenue there. Um, and I think those should be paid parking as well, because uh, it is just on the outskirts of the downtown core, and and maybe still considered the downtown core before the residents, so. I don't know how much more revenue that'll bring in, but um, incrementally, if if it's just a couple of signs that we can do and and then force people to pay there, I think would be a benefit to the community as a whole. Just an observation.
Thank you, Counselor Demoto, uh, Mayor Ireland.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Malik, and just before I. Take my leave, um. One observation and one question. Firstly, the observation, I think that. For myself at least. Paid parking. Is as much about. Asset management as it is about revenue. And managing this public asset is important, and so. The phrase that, um, Mr. Don used earlier about turnover. Um, is important, we made a commitment to try and. Maximize turnover, and that is why I I still have an issue with respect to. Um, changing rates. Or at least maintaining a differential, but it's whatever happens here today. Looks like that would be a recommendation to respect the council's, so another opportunity. So dwell on that, um, I am concerned about. Um, maybe the second. Proposed recommendation, um, not so much about the resident. Um, permit, but. I would prefer that rather than maintaining all other twenty twenty two program parameters, particularly. As they relate to, um. Guest, hotel guest use, that can back for for the discussion. Um, my one question, however, is this. With respect to the recommendation about the upper McCready Center parking. Could the recommendation, or why was the recommendation not to simply remove that parking lot from the paid parking inventory? Um, rather than specifically to say residential use, what if we just removed that from paid parking inventory? Um, if we we have other free parking for anybody. Um, is there, is there something, and this goes back to Counselor Wilson's question, is there something that drives? That. Desire to restrict it to only residents and not to say, okay, this is out of the inventory.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Ireland, uh, Miss Nidam.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Malik through Mayor Ireland, um, I think the only. Concern there would be the proximity of that parking lot to the paid parking zone, and therefore how it could. Decrease revenue in the paid parking zone with the availability of a free parking. In in the immediate vicinity, but other than that. Um, that that is the main consideration, but it's still low usage, it it could be modified, but that is, and so that is an option that council could. Consider and break forward. We won't know until next year, or it it'll be hard to isolate exactly what the impact was, but that would be the outcome.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor, with your lead, I must take my due.
Thank you, Bishop, um, Counselor Wilson.
Uh, is there a way that you you uh, let us know, like, how much McCready, like, top and bottom, uh, made? And what, you know, by making a three, would we be losing those substantial?
Deputy Mayor Malik through the Counselor Wilson, I do have that information. Um.
Less than two thousand dollars.
I do have different, I have two different reports, but, um. Fifteen hundred. Was the revenue generated, like, one thousand five hundred dollars is the amount we generated in the McCready Center lower parking lot. And then the McCready Center upper. A hundred and fourteen dollars. So so both lots. To support the conversation, both lots are very, like, they're not very well utilized, but they are so close to the big parking zone that. Turning him to free parking for everyone. It may have an impact on our revenue generation speed.
Counselor.
I would really like to see a season of. You know, it's another way of honoring the residents, but having a spot for residents to go and park. And I think that will alleviate some of the stress in finding a spot, people know. If I get a vehicle in there or whatever it is, um, you know. Aside from Wednesdays, um. I think it'd be a good, uh, healthy exercise to to check out and see if they'll use it, if not, then, you know, maybe we could go that, I, both of you have valid points, but I think. Getting people off the street in the revenue generating area would be good. Um. Now that we're on stall value. Um, it's too bad that the mayor isn't here, but on page fifty four of seventy six. Uh, where we have on-street zones in Eki Street. Um, which would be the. Fourth bullet going down, um, we have zone A, and so be identified with uh, different amounts of, um. Percentages and and monetary designations there, so, um. The reason I'm making reference to this is because we've identified here, or at least, um. The uh, curb IQ identified that. Our stalls in zone A have a value of up to a thousand and forty. One dollars per space, and when we were talking about our commercial use of public space. Uh, program, we assigned a certain value, which I believe is sixteen hundred dollars per stall, um, based on. Uh, twenty percent of what a potential stall could. Generate from the beginning of May to the end of October, which I think is not, I think it's a false economy. So now we have more of a real number here, and I'm just wondering, um, when we go and, um. When we're discussing, or maybe going back to look at. The commercial use of public space on the stalls, and we may be overcharging. Uh, for those stalls, so I I think that that's something worth while and in discussing, because part of our debate. The last time when we were considering those stall amounts, it was that we didn't have. Uh, the proper assessment on what they were worth, and we were waiting for that information to come back, so now it's in front of us, and I think it's worthy of review, so that's just a comment I'm making. I'm not motioning for that at the moment, I just wanted to make the resident council aware.
Thank you, um. Counselor Demoto, Counselor Wilson.
I'm sorry to keep going back to the free parking lot, um, but uh, I would be in favor of making this free parking lot for all, uh, to counter, um. Counselor Demoto's suggestion that it's a gift to residents, while we're already gifting resident free parking everywhere, this could be one spot in the. Cloak, in proximity to downtown that our visitors can find free parking, and uh, if part of. Uh, paid parking is encouraged, uh, um, vehicles to be, um. Moving into lots, I think, let's say, let's show that this parking lot is there, um. Make it free this year, you know, if it really drastically affects our. Our, um, bottom line, well, then we we can uh, have that conversation again, but uh. Um, yeah, I think it's a, could be a, you know. Gift to our visitors who drive our money.
Counselor Demoto.
I think that's contrary to the whole reason why we're in. Going ahead with this, it's typically the opposite of our intention, so, um. We already do it. Free parking in other areas, this one again, administration is saying that it's close to, and close to the paid parking. Um, I think it would be a deterrent on our revenues, and me, I think it would be healthy, again, I I'm not going to form. The same horse, but. The burden, I think, I, it's not a matter of gifting them, it's just. I think it's, um. I think it'd be a healthy exercise to trial for once, and we're to see if they'll get used, and if it doesn't, then it's better to try and fail, but not try at all.
Counselor Keller MP.
I can be honest, I think all of our parks should be paid, and the reason I'm saying this is. But. You know, right now I'm hearing from some of our commercial operators that. Parking lot down online in the town where we have the, um. Electric car plugins. Three quarters of that parking lot is for public parking, and it's free. And then we have. Commercial hotels on the next block. And they have no parking, and they have to pay full for their. Um, guests at that one, and the same, even though another hotel has some parking, but not a lot, they're paying for their guests. So I have had complaints where, oh, why is that commercial parking lot? Down on the eastern town, that just because it has electric plugins, why is the rest of it free? Because they, the that's. There have been. It's unfair. It's unadvantage, and so now if we open up the free center to visitors as well. So now the visitor will go partly there, but it's just not fair, so honestly, in my mind, I think every parking lot should be paid. And I don't think we should have any free parking lots.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I do agree with Counselor Keller MP, um, because residents don't pay, and I, my question is. If you go to the system where they just register at the beginning of the season, it's just the basic two-hour parking, and then parking lots will be free unlimited, correct, is that how it would go? So. We're already offering our residents free parking in parking lots all day long.
Uh, counselors, are there any other questions for administration, Counselor Demoto?
Well, I like where Counselor Keller MP is going, and you know, to the, you know, um. Add to the conversation, you know, I I think, yes. Uh, again, parking lots would be free to all residents, but if they have their own spot, then they're not competing. Whether it's peak hours going to work or whatever with visitors, and I think, again. Um. Supports my argument, if we're not competing with their visitors, we have a spot for residents to go, that alleviates a lot of the stress, um, but again, we don't know, because we haven't tried it.
Counselors, I'm going to ask you a question, I'll see you, Mr. Given. We have recommendations in front of us, if it's not me that we have to make one recommendation, we can actually. Put two, three different motions. For clarity for council, for clarity for administration. And I think it might be a lot easier than trying to do one motion. Uh, where we'll get an agreement, uh, and so at this point. Counselors, if there are any other questions for administration, Director Nidam, Director Malochak. Or CEO Given, this would be a good time to ask, and if not, I would suggest we contemplate. A, um. A number of motions to move the paid parking law. Counselor, sorry, Director Nidam.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Malik, and, um. I I only. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, and um, I I only wanted to add that um. We appreciate the conversation is here today, we are looking for some movement forward on some of the items, and I guess what I'm driving at is that. Uh, May first is around the corner, we do have some, there are some operational impacts on on some of those items, some we can explore as as the season goes on. And implement later, but others are quite time sensitive, um, and just sort of keeping that in context that. Uh, we do need to take action on some of the mind of some of those items soon here, so we appreciate your timely attention, that's better.
Thank you, Director Nidon. Counselor Hall.
I will start and make a motion that committee direct administration to modify the resident permit program to a one-time registration process, no on-street. No on, no on-street actually required.
Councillors, any discussion? Councillor Demota?
And were you intending and maintain all other twenty, twenty-two program parameters?
I wasn't, because I'm not a hundred percent with that, actually, so, no, I was not.
It's in, it, the information's in the.
I wasn't.
In the um.
I was not planning on adding that to my motion.
You're not adding it to?
No.
I have a question for administration, and I also, um, what would leaving that section of a motion mean to the program?
Uh, through Deputy Mayor Melnick, councillor Demota, I think it would mean that council has more decisions to make today, and uh, as I understand motion. It's a clarification of one specific program parameter, and it leaves open the opportunity for council to define the other program parameters here today. Um, and uh, any uh recommendations that committee may still do have to go to council, so there'll be an opportunity for council to. Discuss, debate, make motions to define the program parameters, but it won't be final until it comes to council for approval, uh, at the following council meeting. Um, so as I understand motion, it's one parameter, leaving open the opportunity to discuss the other parameters here today.
Councillor Demota?
I could support that motion.
Councillors, is there any other debate on the motion? All those in favor? And that's carried. Councillor Demota?
I would like to make a motion, um, that committee recommend council. Uh, direct administration to. Consider or explore the ghost zone between Hazel Avenue and the residential. Stretch. To be working.
Just, just for clarity, councillor Nodda, um, if the intention is essentially to add that zone. To the program, then maybe that, you know, because the, I think the answer from administration would be, we can put up. We can put up bowls and add it to the zone, uh, you know, to the parking area, apart, um. And if that was the direction, also we can do that, um. I'm not sure there's a, there may be, there would be some minor costs involved, um, and there may be some organizational. Um, work that we'd have to do with hotspot to sort of add that as a zone, um, but I think that those are. Moderate costs, if any, um. And so, if if the intent is to add it to the zone, then I think you can simply say so, um, and council discussed whether that's something.
Yes, I wish I had a proper uh term for that zone, and because we're not allowed to, or we're kind of confined to not giving direction. On increasing that. And they hear, it would have to be council making that correct, so, um, I think that was the intention, so. I'll try to reword that, that committee recommend council direct administration to expand paid parking. Into the ghost zone while cannot drive between Hazel and residential. I mean, is that more clear?
Uh, I, I think committee can give us, uh, can give that, uh. Direction, if committee is asking council to approve that expansion. Um, I think you can just have that as a recommendation to council, council doesn't necessarily need to. Uh, direct administration, once council sets that program parameter, so, so I think we can work with that motion.
All right, thank you, councillor Demota, is there any other discussion on the, that particular motive? There being none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? That's carried. We have two other items that administration has recommended. The capital, uh, we probably need a motion on, uh, is there a council ready to make a motion on either of those? Councillor Keller.
The committee, sorry. The committee recommend council convert the upper McCready Center parking lot to residential parking.
Thank you, councillor, any discussion? Seeing none, all those, um, sorry, was that?
Sorry, yeah, but I, sorry, it was slow, uh, I would just speak against that motion, I think, uh. Residents already have free parking everywhere, so it just doesn't make sense that they will have free parking in that, um, in that parking lot anyway. Uh, it doesn't get used, it's not like there's no space for those residents in that stall spot, anyway. I would more so uh in support of reduction rate in that parking lot, just to encourage, um, and so it could still be paid. Could be a dollar, um, you know. So, anyway, just to speak against your motion, but I understand where you want it.
Okay, councillor Demota? Well, I think it's before us, because the company that conducted the research and the people that are on the street. Every day has brought that forward to council. I'm not in, in every single day, and I'm trusting the judgment of the people that are experts in this, so I'm supportive. Going to convert that to. Thank you, councillor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, um, I also am not in support of this motion, only because, um, residents get free parking in all the parking lots. I don't necessarily know if last summer was the busiest summer we're gonna have, and maybe as, you know, more, you would get back to normal, we'll be needing that space. Um. Yeah, because, again, this is perfectly.
All right, we have had some discussion, I would like to call the questions, all those in favor? Are you in favor, all those opposed? Opposed that motion is carried? And there's still one final item that we, councillor Wilson?
I would make a motion that committee, uh, recommend council to, uh. Keep, uh, the rates the same as twenty twenty-two, so that would be two, uh, two dollars in parking lots, three dollars in on-street. Uh, or the twenty twenty-three season, and I, the only, the reason I'm making that move is I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. We did really well last year, um, I don't want to be like, I don't want to get greedy, I want to, I want to, uh, as councillor Hall just said. Yeah, it was busy last summer, but wasn't like a banger year, and, uh, you know. If we keep rates the same, um, I, I, I would, you know, I'm not an expert, I have forecasters, we're gonna, we're gonna do better than we did. Uh, last year, so, um, yeah, and I would suggest keep rates same.
I like that motion, and I think with, you know, a minor expansion and more kiosks. And starting earlier, if we can, this year, we had a little bit of a late start, uh, I think that we could see, uh, some better revenue, so I would like to. Keep going with what we've had and, uh, not, or, you know, um. The idea that our rates are just gonna be going up, so I I'd like to try this out for another season, thank you. Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you for that motion, because I was struggling with having the rates in the parking lots on-street being the same, and I wasn't sure. I think at four dollars an hour would maybe be a bit too much, but I, but I definitely think there needs to be a differential between bringing on-street parking and parking lots. So I can support that motion as well.
Councillors, I, I would like to speak against the motion, I think we should be moving to three dollars, um. I believe we did show that there was a demand for it, and so I, uh. I would probably be in favor of going to a three-dollar per hour, but we have a motion on the floor. Uh, suggesting we keep the. Rates at the existing rates in twenty twenty-two, is there any other discussion? Councillor Keller, I mean.
I agree that we should have a different rate on the street, a different rate on the parking lot, but I think we should move. Like whether we moved to fifty in the parking lot, three fifty on the street. I, I think we need to increase, I, you know, um, you go to the city, it's. Seven bucks in the parking lot for an hour, you know, I mean, I, I was in, um. The airport the other day. For fifteen minutes and I paid fifteen bucks, you know what I mean, like, it's everywhere you go, you pay for parking. And I think it's important, like, um. To raise a little, go forward a little every year, because if we increase a proper percent every year, then. You don't want to go status quo, then next year we're down on that revenue, because we don't know, you know, we don't know what we're gonna face this summer. Last year we had the fire in September, set us back, we don't know what summer is opening, so I'd rather be up a little bit. So to kind of guarantee we will get that six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, councillor. All right, so we've had an opportunity to comment on the motion, and for clarity, the motion is to. Recommend to council that the parking fees remain the same in twenty twenty-three as twenty twenty-two. And if I have that correct, I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor? All those opposed? And that motion is defeated. I apologize, if I may, that council was, because I did want to report that, but the arguments made me, and like I said. It's not that I'm a fence sitter, I might have an opinion, if you have a better one, I, I, I can switch, so that made more sense. Me, even like, we don't consider like twenty-five cents or fifty cents, so, you know, it doesn't have to be a dollar. Because I think four dollars to me from where we were sounds astronomical, but maybe it's not, because you're paying a dollar an hour. Or a dollar a minute, we, we, the airports. Looking forward to the next motion. Councillor Keller.
I'll, uh, make a motion that committee, um, recommends council that, um. We increase the parking lots to two dollars and fifty cents per hour, and on-street parking to three twenty-five.
Okay, councillor, so the, um. The recommendation that will come from committee council was to increase the parking lot rates. Um, to two fifty per hour, and to increase the on-street parking rates to three twenty-five per hour. Councillor Wilson?
Uh, two things, um. Our visitors do not have bottomless pockets, so, you know, I, these increases year after year, I don't think are sustainable. Uh, yes, uh, my question is to administration, how does that look on our signs, you know, like, uh. Are they stickers, and are we just every year, you know, like layer on a new sticker, or, and you're at two seven, two point seven five or two point, whatever it is. You know, that, that's a bit maybe tapped. Director Nidon, literally.
Deputy Mayor Melnick through the councillor Wilson, I was just having that conversation sidebar with director Malachek, um. The signs don't display the rate, so when you, when you scan or when you use the app, so that's where the rates are. So for us, the, the rates conversation is an important one, of course, and but operationally what that looks like is. On the back end with hotspot, we need to update the rates, so the signs remain the same. Once you scan or once you use the app is where you see the amount, um, the piece that is a bit more cumbersome for us to modify is the kiosks. So programming of the payment kiosks is a piece that, um, requires a bit more time, but it is also possible. But this is one of those time-sensitive items, if we want the new rates to be in place for May first. Uh, decisions need to, to be forthcoming in, in coming weeks, um, but in terms of, you know, uh. Fifty cents, twenty-five cents, seventy-five cents, it's mostly electronic, it's mostly credit card transactions, so the, the. We're not dealing with coins, physical coins, so I don't see that as being a, a barrier. Um, and I think the other consideration that you might want to bring to this conversation is the full-day parking rate law. Parking lot rate, that's what I'm trying to say, um, so we had, uh, three dollars on-street, two dollars in parking lots. And then twelve hours a day, twelve dollars. I'm sorry, twelve dollars a day in parking lots, so if there is a modification to the hourly rates, where does that leave? The full-day parking lot rate, if that is something that council is still willing to consider, we could just do hourly in parking lots as well. Or if you also have an intention to modify that rate, that's something you might want to add to your discussions.
Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, um. I would have supported the motion if it was two fifty and three fifty, I just think that there just needs to be that dollar difference. Um, if we're gonna go to two fifty in lots for hour, maybe we just make the daily rate fifteen, seems to be multiples of six, I do think that. We need lots of moving parker more than drivers.
I can make that amendment, okay.
So, is that a friendly amendment that's being accepted by councillor Keller, I mean, that. You know, on-street parking would be three dollars and fifty cents per hour, and the, um. Parking lot would be two fifty per hour. And at this point, in this motion, we do not refer to the power dollar. Um, her day at this point, any other discussion? Councillor Demota?
Well, I just wanted to say that this is just a recommendation from committee to council, so we still have at least another week to. Um, you know, contemplate this and then make an amendment or whatever motion that we want to direct administration to. And hopefully have, uh, two other councillors available, um, because I, I do think it's an important decision, but I like the direction we're going in, and I, I would. Support this.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor? And all those opposed? We have four in favor, and one opposed, motion is carried. Um, at this point, I'm gonna help, and this one, I'm gonna ask CEO Given and Director Nidon, is there any other information for paid parking? Maybe a report that we need to address today to be able to move forward to implement on May first. Other than other slight or minor changes that may come out of intermediate.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Melnick, I guess I'd just refer to the, uh, daily rate in the on-street lots, uh, that is one, um. Uh, one parameter that you might want to define now, if there is any change proposed, not, that's fine as well, um. But I think that's the only thing that I can pick up, Director Nidon, are there any other person?
Well, I agree, thank you, CEO Given, so yes, my understanding of the last motion was for, uh, hourly rates for on-street, off-street. But did not include the daily rate for parking lots, so that could be an, an outstanding item that committee might recommend council, and, um. There, if there are other parameters. On the hotel program or on different items like that, they can come at a later time, and they are not. Sort of fundamental program-wide things that impact kiosks or signage or things like that, so I think we've covered. The operational items that we need to be in place for May first, not suggesting that the other items are not timely and important, but that they could be. Uh, fleshed out and addressed at, at a different time.
Thank you, councillor Nidon, I'll go to councillor Hall and then councillor Demota.
Thank you, I would make a motion that committee recommend council increase the parking lot daily rate to fifteen dollars.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Councillor Demota?
Well, that's the number I came up with, so that's good, I'm glad we're on the same page that way, um, but, okay, well, and to me, the two hours. Uh, the two dollars per hour, twelve dollars is based on six hours, so if we move that up fifty cents, that's fifteen dollars, would have been the math worked. And I was just gonna say, um, that increase would have been dependent on what we were gonna charge. Uh, for the stall per hour, in my mind, in the, in the off-street parking, so that is in line with that motion. So I'm, I'm supporting that.
Thank you, any other debate on the motion? There being none, I'll call the question, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you, we have passed the motion with four in favor, one opposed, Counselor DeMola.
You know, I was waiting to make a motion for the next one, so I didn't mean to cut you off there.
Um, the next one again, this particular um.
I wanted to make you aware that I would like to have a making another motion towards paid parking.
Alright.
That committee direct administration to. Explore. A. Program for the one hotel in the community that doesn't have its own parking. Define a similar approach. To. The residential parking. Passes. In the downtown core. Does that make sense? We could take a break and I can develop a better motion and come back with that.
I'm happy to take a break, I think would be a good idea, you kind of caught me a little bit off guard, so. I suppose it is eleven oh two, let's come back at ten after eleven. Thank you very much, everyone, um, we are still on agenda item seven. Point one, paid parking, um, and is there any other motions to resolve? Pay this agenda before we move on. Counselor DeMola.
Okay, well, to address the the hotel situation again, I. I feel like I'm not gonna get any consensus uh from council. And um, in some equity issues with uh. A certain hotel that doesn't have any onsite paid parking or onsite parking. Uh, for their use. But uh, I'm willing to go forward with something to have a discussion at uh our next council meeting, so. I move that committee recommend council expand paid parking program to include uh. The east off-street lot. That's the one in front of the Crimson Hotel. Uh. And then direct administration to develop a bulk purchase program. For hotels with limited onsite parking.
Thank you for that, um, counselors, um, any? Debate on our questions on the motion, Counselor Wilson.
Um, sir, can you repeat, speak to the. Uh, inclusion of a, the certain park parking lot, and why? Why are you pushing for that right now?
Well, when I'm, when I'm having discussions about equity, uh for an example, let's say hotels in the downtown core. Uh, are. Maybe asked to participate in a bulk purchase program. Uh, if again, if we have free parking, if we find free parking in front of a certain hotel. Um, it does. In my mind, at least, uh provide an unfair advantage to uh people that are looking at. Hotel rooms in the community, so if you're outside and say, no, well, that hotel's got free parking, I'm gonna stay there. As opposed to where, you know, you're forced to pay in other areas, so to me to make it fair. Um, if if you don't want, if there's no desire for council. To acknowledge that there's a hotel that. Hat. At this point. Find any onsite parking, then I think it's fair. For everyone else that. We expand the paid parking lot to that east area where the. Charging stations are.
Counselor Wilson.
Just to counter um. Downtown hotels have the uh. Privilege benefit of being downtown, um, I think uh hotels that are further out uh of um. Then have uh the ability to offer more parking, I, you know, I I don't, uh, I think this is a larger conversation to have, I wouldn't wanna give. Um. Direction without having it, um. Sorry, I'm not sure where I was going with that, but.
Yeah, well, um, this is a committee recommendation to council. And spend a parking program there, the other portion of that motion is to direct admin to develop a bulk, a bulk purchase program. Their hotels with limited onsite parking, so um, it's kind of a new part motion, and it's going to. The first part going to council for consideration, so we're just making the recommendation here.
Counselor Keller, I mean.
To be honest, I think um our commercial starts at Aspen. All the way down to Hazel, and we just now have recommended that we go beyond Hazel there to um. The residential. So. When you come on Trish Street, um, really, commercial does start at Aspen, right now, we are going to start in that awesome. Patrick Canada there forward, uh last year we missed that block, or the year before we missed that block altogether, and it started on Paramount. So I think not only should it be the parking lot there, but I do believe we should be onsite parking there as well, but uh. Please charge.
Counselor DeMola.
Well, I just wanted to say, um, actually, all we talked to Paul is on that. If anybody else has a comment.
Um, I would weigh in and suggest that. Um, and my feeling is that we we could look at a program for bulk purchase for hotels. Um, without identifying any particular hotel, there are a number of accommodations that are lodging. Night in the downtown core, some with, some without parking, some with. Um, more, some with less. Um, but I believe to be equitable. Uh, if you're in the lodging business, i.e. uh, the, I can think of four hotels, maybe five on a, on a hostel. That that program would be something that administration could develop. To be brought back to council um for review. But it would be difficult for me to. Identify a particular business as the only one being able to um have that opportunity for bulk purchases.
I'm not sure that that's the intent, I I don't think. One business. Would have the opportunity to bulk purchase, we we're talking about having a program available to all hotels that. Have uh limited onsite parking. Um. To. Apple what Counselor Keller, I mean, is saying, if if we're. Charging on the street right in front of that parking lot, because it's considered. In the commercial core, why wouldn't we be charging for that parking lot? I think that's a valid point, so. Again, it's just a recommendation from committee to council.
Um, so CEO Given, um, wish to make a comment, and then I'll give it. Mr. Given will go with your direction, and on.
Uh, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Melnick, so I think from an administrative perspective, um. Any program that we might bring back to council. Um, could be broadly offered uh to whichever sort of. Business entities council wanted to identify, so I think the framing of the motion um. Is a starting point, it's direction to administration to come back uh with uh a bulk purchase program. I think council could define who qualifies for that bulk purchase program after you've seen it and received it. Um, so I'm maybe a little, I think from an administrative perspective, I I think we can. Build that turnaround back to council, and council can decide who might qualify for that, I can see that there may be other businesses. Uh, or other accommodation type properties that might like to be able to offer that to their guests. Um, and that's something council could consider, and administration could maybe think about it a little bit before we return back, but it really is. Does council wish to establish some kind of bulk purchase program? And then like, who gets to be in that program, I think is something you could define in greater detail what to do.
Thank you for that, and I want to direct in it on first before returning to Counselor DeMola.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Melnick, um, I support CEO Given's position and would uh. Also support the committee direct administration piece on on two of the items that are contemplated in the motion as I've written it down, so. Um, the the bulk. Uh, program for businesses being one, and then the the other item I wanted to mention in relation to expanding towards the east. Um, so whether it's the parking lot or on street, um. Options are technically feasible, but there are are also some challenges that I can foresee with that, and therefore a committee direct administration to. Explore what that would look like would be uh my recommendation here as opposed to committee recommend council, but. That parking lot, um, there are agreements in place in relation to the EV stalls, so the electric vehicle stalls may not be. May or may not be possible to turn into paid parking. Um, and also that current parking lot currently has a lot of large stalls, so it is designed for bus and RV parking, so all the stalls that are. Against the train track are currently not um the typical standard vehicle size, so how would that work? Uh, in the context of paid parking is something to consider, and then generally speaking, if we're expanding the zone, the paid parking zone, um. It does thin out enforcement, as in, we only have so many officers and what they can cover and what we prioritize prioritize them doing. Um, so we have been operationally prioritizing enforcement in the paid parking zones, which means the resident-only zones see a bit less. Uh, patrol, they see some, but they see less, and then so that's another consideration in expanding the zone, um. When Counselor DeMola was speaking to the zones immediately in front of the businesses on cannot go in west, that's a relatively small zone. But if we're talking about increasing the paid parking zone more largely, then there are enforcement considerations as well, so. A committee direct administration kind of motion would allow us to document that and get back to you with with what we see. Um, the challenges or the opportunities might be, um. Yeah, so the opportunity for getting back to you with more detail is what I wanted to say.
Counselors, um. Any other? Comments, any other discussion? Counselor DeMola.
Yeah, so. Again, just to to be extremely clear here. The motion. To. Committee recommend council expand the paid parking program. Is. For moving here to there means, actually means, and if I have to use the word consider, uh then. So be it, we could put in the. The many. Recommend that council consider to expand a parking to include the east. Off-street lot. So if we're not saying let's do it. And if we have to move forward on it. Then that's, we move forward on it. Second part of the motion, you heard.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, uh Deputy Mayor, I'm thinking about that parking lot. The street in front is not paid. So if we're gonna turn that parking lot into paved, not the streets, there's still parking down there for. The guests, like I'm not, I it. Again, I. Back to Counselor Keller, I mean. It should all be paid for, like, I agree with that, I just wonder if we would then need to look at. Turn the street into part paid, because it just kind of doesn't. It seems strange to me that that parking lot. Will be paid, and yes, there's buses parked there, and then their charging stations.
So what I'll do, do expedite the process and make this a little healthier, I'm gonna break it. So I. Um, withdraw that motion. And I would like to move. That committee direct administration to develop a bulk purchase program for hotels with limited onsite parking.
So we have the first motion on the floor. Uh, is there any? Discussion on that, Counselor Hall?
Yes, like, my question would be if there is a park or a hotel, sorry, that's not close to downtown, but does have limited, whatever that definition is, could they also partake in these bulk? Purchase program and then allow their guests to drive downtown and. From part.
Um, Mr. Deputy, CEO, Mr. Given.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Melnick, or Counselor Hall, I think that was sort of the point that I was referencing before, really administration. This is a new idea, this topic, this meeting, uh, there's a direction to administration, and come back with, what would that actually look like? Um, and some advice to you about, uh, you know, maybe about what parameters or who should be, but we can then come back to the table and describe it to you. Um, and then you can decide how that, whether that meets certainly intended, you'd like to see, whether you would support it or not, so. The answer would be, I don't know, uh, and that's why administration might have that chance to take it away and give it a comeback, uh, and give it a little bit of. Uh, consideration upon the board, sort of. Same specifically, because it is adaptable and we can choose to meet whatever, um, that's probably a a good starting way to do it, and. We'd like to be able to think about what that is in the frame of surprise.
Thank you, um, Counselor DeMola, that. Satellites, perfect, so um, if there's no other discussion, I'd like to call the question, all those in favor? That's carried. Counselor, you're working on the the second motion?
Yeah. The motion that administration returns to council with a paid parking. Uh, expanded program, uh, including the east off-street lot and on-street parking on Kanon.
Thank you, Counselor DeMola. Are there any? Discussion on the motion? Administration's clear on the recommendations? Being no discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried. And with that. I would say we are pretty well done with, I like seven point one. Paid parking, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you very much for your administration, and we're gonna move on to seven point two, S block parking. And to uh, direct in the door, um. Here's your, the one that you're gonna present. This topic.
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Melnick, um, as I indicated earlier, the question was raised about uh the S block parking rates. In conjunction with the paid parking discussion, so that's why this item is back, also because. It's on the motion action list, and it was a report that was due to council. And um essentially, there are two services that the municipality provides in S block. Uh, one being what we commonly refer to as the S block parking lot, which is the new paved parking lot that was developed. Um, on the left, so next to the train tracks when you come into S block. And then the other item that, the other program that we've been running for a a certain amount of time is the storage lots, um, and there's a map on. In the report that shows you where those are. And then essentially, there are two sets of recommendations. For how we handle parking in S block. Um, so the first is to increase the rental fees to four hundred and fifty dollars annually for the storage lots. And um, that recommendation is based on some information that we've reviewed from the similar services that are available in the region, so. Hinden Edson, but also the general Edmonton area, so thanks to the bylaw team for putting some of that information together. Uh, the information on the level of service. Uh, the information on the level of service and the average prices are provided on page two and three of that report. And you'll note that there are uh quite a variety of services, so anything from uh. An acreage out in the open with no fencing, no security, no, no nothing really. Uh, to some pretty high tech facilities with electronic access cards and and all kinds of other services. So that is something for council to consider as uh we look at the rates and what we provide and what uh would be realistic to charge. Understanding that space is at a premium in Jasper specifically. Um, so based on that data is how we came up with the four hundred and fifty annual. Which currently, those fees. I have that a good boy. The fees, um, so with the two percent annual increase that was built in from the last update to the bylaw in twenty eighteen, current fees are three hundred and twenty five. Annual is the current rate for twenty twenty three. And uh, we have about ninety lease agreements with people that have items and storage lots currently. And we have quite a, quite the waitlist for that service. So I don't have that number specifically, but it's upwards of forty names on. Uh, a waitlist for one of those lots to become available. So there's a high demand there and um. Based on council's request, we came up with the new rate and then. Also, we are not in a position to implement that currently, but if council is contemplating uh changing the rates. We would like to recommend a thirty dollar annual discount for electronic payments. So uh in the bylaw area, we're looking to sort of modernize our practices there, but there is um. An interface with the finance department and we're not ready to implement that currently. But it is something that we would work towards in the future and that would um alleviate some administrative work, would create a bunch of administrative work to set it up in the first place. But in the future, would yield some efficiencies and we are seeing uh residents that stay in those lots for a long time. So the sort of prepayment or electronic payment does make sense in in that context. Um, the second recommendation in the report is about the storage lot themselves, so um. Our leases with Parks Canada are actually expired on those parcels and the reason we hadn't uh renewed them is. Council was considering what to do with those. Is this a service? We should continue providing. Um, part of the challenge is that if we were to give those lots back to Parks Canada, there's considerations around the commercial cap. Um, so not necessarily anyone would be able to build anything there. Um, but there might be opportunities for institutional uses. We're not exactly sure what that looks like, but that's something council could send us in that direction and go investigate what that could mean. And then we could potentially keep operating some of the lots, but. Use one of the one or more of the lots for other purposes is also something uh that is on the table. And um, whether or not that happens, if we continue to operate storage lots. There is a bit of uh maintenance and capital upgrades that we would need to do to those facilities. So essentially, they're a gravel lot. Uh, they're uneven, the stalls are not marked. Uh, there's a few challenges there with that are causing operationally some challenges to get people in there and which one is actually your stall and it's uneven and you can't. You can't park this here or there or anyway, so um. That's what the second recommendation in the report is meant to capture is that there would be some work to do on those storage lots if the plan is to continue operating them. And increase the rates. And then the last item is a bit more general and that's something that we need to pay uh more attention to. But that committee direct administration to develop a program for the S block parking lot, so that's the paved parking lot. Where unused commercial stalls are made available available to residents for winter seasonal vehicle storage and summer seasonal paid parking. So we had a motion from council from October that said. Administration, please go ahead and and look into developing a program, but without those sort of high level. Policy item parameters, it's difficult for us to to go in any one direction. So this is the pitch we're making that. That lot would continue to be used for commercial purposes first, but then recognizing that the occupancy is not there at at all times. Um, that we could develop alternative uses and those are the ones we are proposing. If there is. Support at the committee or council level, then we could flesh out that program in more detail and come back. But we do need some sort of orientation to direct our efforts towards developing an actual program. So um, those are the recommendations. I would also like to note that um the storage lots fees are governed by bylaw. So the next step is so if council passed the first motion to direct administration to revise the surplus bylaw to come back with. Then you would see that bylaw back for first reading and that would be the first step in making that change. And although the bylaw says the rates change on January first annually, the practice is that those leases are up in October. So now is not a bad timeline. If council were to change the rate, then we could have an adequate notice period for those renewals in October to let people know that that's gonna be the new rate. And uh, we could proceed forward in that fashion. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Nidale. Appreciate your report and bringing this to council. Um, councillor Demoto?
Actually, with councillor Wilson at his hand up for me, so I'll leave it. I just, just for a point of clarity here, um, looking at all the numbers on the map and and stand right. Uh, so we've got three, four, uh nineteen, twenty, forty seven, forty eight and forty nine. Um, I understand that three and four are are being used. Um, are we charging for all the spots in nineteen, twenty and then forty seven to forty nine? Uh, through you Deputy Mayor to Director Nidale?
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to councillor Demoto. If uh, if we are not charging for someone who's in those lots, I'm sure my staff will. Be on that as in, as far as we're aware, yes, everyone has a. A lease agreement and annual fees attached to it. And I mean, there are some oddities and anomalies. That we're picking up and every now and again, one of them comes up and we realize, you know, something happened that shouldn't have or. Or someone is storing items that are not supposed to be there according to the bylaw. So it's a, it's an ongoing uh. Management and administrative task that uh Mister Jones deals with and largely is assigned to one of our officers. So currently, one of our bylaw officers is responsible for managing the storage lots and reviewing the files and. And like I said, sometimes there's discrepancies around the stalls, the markings, the size of the lots are all a bit different. But but yes, people are paying for the service.
All right, I wasn't sure uh particularly about forty seven to forty nine if. If uh the municipality actually had some reserved space in there or not. Uh, so that's good news. And from my understanding, uh, as far as enforcement goes, um. The only things that are allowed on those spots are licensed. Vehicles and or trailers, meaning that can be licensed in that regard, can be parked on there. It's not designed to. Set up a garage or a storage shed by any means so that you can keep your rules in or whatever. Am I correct with this?
Uh, yes councillor Demoto, so those uh those rules are outlined in the in the bylaw. So what are the items that you can park there? And yes, uh, it has to be a vehicle. It has to be registered, insured and roadworthy. So as in, if we need the occupant to move the item to do some maintenance or to help someone out who's in the next stall or. There was a burn, a burning building across the fence, for example, and we might need to uh move those items. So yes, they have to be registered, insured and in in working order is the the rules.
All right, and I think the reasoning behind my questioning there is that I don't think that the rest of the committee would consider it unreasonable if there was enforcement on. Other members of the committee breaking those rules. Excellent.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Wilson?
Uh, my question's regarding the S block um commercial lot. Um, unfortunately, it has been overused or underused uh over the last um two, three, four years, whenever it uh got finished. Um, I think one of the reasons is that um, some of the businesses that would be able to use them. Uh, they they can't operate out of there as it at their, um, you know, as their. They're, they're not a link, they don't have a commercial be so, um, to to have their business address. Uh, that has administration looked into the um option or the possibility of uh um. Offering the ability to operate a business out of there, meaning um, you know, particular contractor uh has. Uh, one tool trailer and that's really all they need, the storage for that uh for that um business. Um. Yes, most likely hasn't um rented one of the stalls because. Uh, they can't actually have their their business operating out of there. Uh, have we looked into the possibility there?
Director Nidale?
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to councillor Wilson. I believe the answer to that one and Mister Given might have more detail, but. Um, our parking lots are zoned institutional. So parking lots are considered institutional use and that's. I mean, I might be drawing a conclusion that isn't accurate, but that that's kind of why we can't have commercial users. Uh, claim part of that space as their business location. So that is an item that is restricted. Well, restricted might be the wrong word, but that that that's a Parks Canada jurisdiction to sort of establish whether a location is appropriate for a business or not. And currently, it 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 isn't. Those two, so I think your statement is accurate that those stalls currently can't be used. As a commercial address for a business to to operate in Jasper. Um. So it's a, it's an intergovernmental matter. It's not something that we can decide.
Uh, Mr. Givern?
Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor Melnick, councillor Wilson. Just to reaffirm what Director Nidale said and be clear, uh, no administration hasn't explored that idea. Um, the report here really is focused on parking and there may be some opportunity to to handle that differently, but I think that's a much larger and longer term discussion. Um, so no, administration hasn't looked at that alternative or that opportunity here. And there isn't anything in the recommendations that administration believes would prevent having that discussion or, you know, fleshing up that idea. Uh, this really is a, what do we do about the use that we have on those sites now and how we modernize that and make it more consistent. Uh, and clear for people they're gonna be using those. Uh, that's what the focus is, uh, for the report. And there's that opportunity to have those larger discussions that council wishes to, uh, separate.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Given, uh councillor Keller and the.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, my question is, Mr. Nidale, um, in the past, like, as on the commercial space, when you um. Rent a space, you register the vehicle, you register the trailer and that's what goes there. There's a number of companies in town like Rafflin Company, Stur Company that have a number of vehicles. And they mainly could store it on one vehicle, but it wouldn't be the same vehicle. Every night where that vehicle's out and but all the vehicles are registered. I know that has been a problem in the past. I was just wondering if that has been resolved.
Thank you for the question councillor Keller and the. I would have to go back to the bylaw team and inquire about that one. That is not um, an item I'm familiar with, but. If, if that's a parameter that we wanted to implement that. It's so the stall could be rented to a, an entity, a business, but that the equipment itself could change. I think we might require a list of, you know, what may be parked there so we can verify that it is. Appropriate for the stall and and whatnot and that those vehicles are registered and insured and and all that good stuff, but I. Can't see a huge limitation of why we couldn't accommodate that.
I I think if we were able to open that up, I think we'll see, we would see a lot more commercial um. Companies use that. I do know a couple that looked into it and said, well, we're limited to one vehicle. We can't do that. And I think some inquiries and said, no, that's how it works. So I'm wondering if we could relook at those rules. I think that would definitely um help some of our companies drop summer.
Thank you. Councillor Demoto, or councillor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, I can absolutely support raising the leases on the storage lots with the waiting list of over forty. That makes sense. My, I had a question about S block, but it seems to maybe have been somewhat answered, but I was one, you know, has it? Been utilized well in the past or is it always kind of been like it's about twenty five percent occupancy with fifty out of sixty one? And I wondered why it wasn't utilized. Is it, was it, is it too expensive? And maybe it's because commercial can't operate over there and maybe it's because they can't. More than one vehicle. I mean, is there, is it plug-in access to like you can plug in your vehicle there for the one fifteen months just as a six?
Councillor, director Nidale?
Deputy Mayor Melnick through to councillor Hall. Uh, thanks for the question. I think, uh, so there are no plugins is is my understanding as well. Um, there are two different stall lengths, so depending on what kind of equipment you wanna park there. Um, this is a relatively new facility as in in twenty twenty is when, so August first twenty twenty is when we first accepted vehicles in there. So that capital project and so that all used to be trees. It was zoned as a natural open space, I think, and then. Due to the fact that it's now a parking lot, all of our parking lots are institutional. Um, and since the opening of the facility, we never really saw uh an uptake. Now, why that is specifically, there could be a bunch of different factors, but certainly keeping it to commercial use. I think there was a thought that there was a need for that and that there would be more of a demand and then as we were seeing there, there isn't now. Factors contributing to it that we can explore, but that's also why we're uh proposing to council that. Our recommended approach would be to maintain it as a commercial parking lot and that that would be the priority use. So we would try to fill it with commercial vehicles if we can, but then recognizing that it is not being utilized to its capacity. What are the alternative uses that we could have and seeing the high demand that we have for storage lots? That's how we came up with the winter vehicle storage for residents. So people may not need the year round storage, but certainly for the winter months. To get your R V or van or whatever it is out of your own spaces. And then um, we also see an opportunity for paid parking. So. One of the requests that we get a lot is, hey, I'm leaving for a week. Where can I leave my car, for example? Could be one of the uses that we could contemplate for the paid parking. So how could we monetize those spots that are not being used by commercial entities? Uh, and run a bit of a hybrid program there is what we, if if there's general support at the policy level for the recommendation, then we could go do our homework and. Come back with a more formal proposal or detailed proposal.
Thank you director Nidale. Uh, councillor Demoto?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, you know, I'm I'm quite fortunate to uh have an opportunity to to park. Uh, recreational vehicle there. Um, here's something else because they can't use this one. Some some leasing and I honestly. I'm being, I'm being enough. So I'm willing to support an increase because I know how painful that is and I know how much I used to pay when somebody charged me to. Park my vehicle um in a garage. So I I think uh we could go up there. I would like to see the uh S block, S block parking lot uh be maximized. It's full potential. And um, I am for expanding the recreational vehicle. Residential storage there for the the winter season. And you know, I I have to make a comment that I I'm remiss for not having the foresight of. Asking, at least if there was gonna be any power stalls provided there, uh, when we were installing. The lines for the, the lighting in that area. I'm wondering if down the road we can try to expand that service. Because I I understand that we're missing opportunities for commercial vehicle storage there because of diesel. And uh, those vehicles need to be plugged in in a few months. So. Again, uh, an opportunity to maximize those spots, um, maybe at an incremental cost, but I'm not sure to what extent. So that could be a future discussion.
Thank you councillor Demoto? Is there any other councillor?
Uh, yeah, if there isn't any, I would make sure it's motioning. That committee direct administration to revise the storage lots by law to increase rental fees to four fifty annually. Including a provision to provide thirty dollars annual discount for electronic payments and return to regular money for a first reading.
Is there any discussion on the motion? There being none, I'll call the question, all votes in favor? And that's carried. Councillor Keller and the.
On the motion that committee direct administration to develop a program for the S block parking lot where unused commercial stalls are made available to residents for winter season. Vehicle storage and summer seasonal paid parking also to go through a program for. Guests that want to leave their vehicles for overnight when they're heading out on backcountry trips, et cetera.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councillor Demoto? Is the term et cetera included in that motion? Does that hurt? It would be spelled E T E B as opposed to E B B carry. Council, any other discussion? All the question, all those in favor? And that's carried. We have one more recommendation from the administration, councillor Demoto?
I would like to move that committee direct administration to work towards standardizing practices in storage lots. Including renewing leases with Parks Canada. Including reviewing leases with parks Canada, developing a maintenance plan with operate with the operations department. And bring forward recommendations for capital upgrades in twenty twenty four.
Thank you for that. Councillors, is there any discussion on this third motion? There being none, all those in favor, I'll call a question. Carried. Thank you and thank you. Director Nada. On a revised agenda then, we're moving to seven point three climate resilience capacity building project. And I see that is.
Deputy Mayor Melnick, Director Nada will be surprised by that. But uh we're joined by our municipal energy manager. Um Ross Conant is here on screen with us. Uh this is an informational item uh about a a success that we've recently had. And securing some additional funds for us uh through that uh and then administration recommend maybe we can break. That'd be an appropriate point to break. Um because I don't know that we have any additional staff or uh consultants that are online. Uh so I'll hand it over to Ross to make a presentation.
Yes, thank you for us. My apologies. I'm in the renumbering. I got myself this number.
Uh good morning, everyone. That's okay. Um so today I'm presenting the RFD. The recommendation to the council is to uh. Uh sorry, to the committee is that the committee direct administration to proceed with the proposed climate resilience capacity building project. And I'll I'll give a high level overview of what the project is. Alternatively, that the committee direct administration to discontinue the proposed climate resilience capacity building project. So. Uh we may or may not uh you know, agree on the reasons for the change in climate. But uh we are seeing every day that there is uh the climate around us is changing. Uh and Alberta's change in climate could mean droughts, wildfires, increased flooding, storms, et cetera. Um but as a community, there are things we can do to be well prepared for these changes. Alberta municipalities and the government of uh Al- sorry, the government of Alberta has made funds, had made funds available. Uh through municipal climate change action center. To assess adaptation measures and create climate resiliency plans for Alberta municipalities as well as indigenous communities. So the administration wanted to make use of this opportunity and we applied for this grant. And secured uh eighty thousand dollars to go ahead and implement project. So what is climate resilience? So the climate change could affect a wide range of um domains. It could affect agriculture, food security, forest, human health, infrastructure, wildfire risk, water quality and supply. But the resiliency can be enhanced through a range of soft and hard adaptations. So soft adaptation measures are based in municipal policy and practices. Things like changes to land use, stricter building requirements, plans for emergency management and changes to insurance, et cetera. And hard adaptations include tangible changes to infrastructure, things like building drainage channels, dams, dikes. Uh elevating, relocating infrastructure and shielding buildings against heat. So before we can build uh adaptations, uh we have to assess. The uh we have to do a risk assessment and then build an adaptation uh plan and resilience plan uh based off of that. So. We proposed to hire a expert, a a group of consultants who are experts in climate change and. Climate resilience and capacity building to uh deliver those three items to us. Number one is to do a regional climate product projection for the community of Jasper. So we can understand what kind of impacts we can uh see in the future. The second one is to do a whole community wide risk, climate risk assessment. Uh that it'll consider the impacts on natural and built infrastructure, uh the health, the wellness and the culture of the community members. And then finally, uh we will get a report with recommendations for uh adaptation strategies, uh next steps. And uh since the town of Hinton is also uh in has has also got this uh grant and they will be using the same consultant. We also want to look at some synergies between Hinton and Jasper because they are more or less in the same climate. Uh they will fall in the same region for the climate forecast. Um all this information will be helpful for the municipal budgeting and future steps in how to build the resilience. Uh for the community and also build capacity within the municipality to uh address some concerns that we may see in the future. Uh as of now, the project is tentatively scheduled to begin this month uh and complete by September thirtieth. In in and in uh from a financial context, uh there is no cost to the municipality as the project. Uh is completely funded by the program. So the cost is eighty thousand dollars and we have already secured the funds uh for the project. And uh yeah, that's all. I have any questions?
Councillors, do you have any questions councillor DeMoy?
Well, I I really am grateful to have us in front of us and thank you for us for for providing us the information and work behind this. Uh to me, this is an easy one to swing through the fences on and in fact, it's it's a key ball set up. It's there for us to take advantage of and it's being funded. So I'm I'm in full support.
Thank you councillor DeMoy. Councillors, any other comment? Councillor DeMoy.
Well, you know what? When I was going over this, we were talking about climate change and. It was never more evident this year than when we had the opportunity to to fly over the park and listen. To a con- uh conservation specialist uh to talk about that. This is something that's a reality and it's more so. Now that we've uh you know, we've had the uh introduction of the pine beetle into our areas. So there's a lot of things, um you know, even outside of that that consider and I'm looking forward to getting some information back, uh the details from this.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Given, I think that the report to me that it um. Uh that is in good timing for twenty twenty four budget should we have any projects for this report. Would be able to provide some guidance.
Uh thanks Deputy Mayor Malick. Yes, uh it is. And I believe and Ross, you can um borrow the specifics. But I believe that the intention of the consult was to provide preliminary recommendations to those slightly earlier stage, which would be helpful. The administration so we get a bit more of a sense. Um I would imagine that they're really uh guiding and there's a be significant work that will come as a result of this. Um but yes, there will be an opportunity for some of that work to inform or for budget presentations.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions? Any other questions for the locals? Councillor Wilson.
Uh I would make them a recommendation that committee direct administration proceed with the proposed climate resilience capacity building uh project.
Thank you for that. Councillors. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you for us for hanging in there with us for the morning. Appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Go ahead councillor DeMoy.
I would like to propose that we uh break for lunch now because we still have a healthy portion of our agenda to tackle and. For administration's sake and and our well being. I think uh it'd be a good time to do that.
Thank you for that. Um councillors and to the public, it is now twelve noon. And we typically will take an hour for lunch. Uh so I'd like to advise council and administration who will be returning. As well as uh the public that will be starting our council meeting again as of one o'clock. So good afternoon and welcome back, everyone. We are going to reconvene the committee of the whole. For March fourteenth at one oh three. And when we last left you, we had finished with. Revised agenda item seven point three and moving now. Moving now to agenda item seven point four, Alberta Living Wage Network. Um which it was an item that Mayor Ireland wished to bring to the table. Is there uh, Mr. Given, can you uh speak to this at all or are you uh able to speak to it?
Deputy Mayor Malick, I can briefly, certainly won't speak to the mayor's intent, but the concept of a living wage is um uh. Methodical approach uh to consistently determining what it costs to live in a given community. Uh and I think that there's a a built in acknowledgement that different communities have different sort of cost structures. As I think Henry who lives in Jasper would be able to tell you. Um and the intent of the living wage network is to uh. Take a consistent approach to making a calculation and then understanding that uh what that number is. The intent, I believe, is to enable policymakers to decide what to do about the living wage number. So um the Alberta Living Wage Network is an organization that has a methodology of doing that. For other municipalities that are members of the network. Um and uh really access or joining the network provides the municipality uh a number of benefits. Which are laid out in the document, which include uh that calculation of the unique living wage for the community now based on standardized methodology. It uh supports working with other municipalities uh to reduce duplication. Uh gives us ongoing uh access to the organization's living wage calculator. Provides an opportunity for employers should they wish to be certified under the uh recognition program. And then provide support uh to our municipal staff members in including um that analysis. Um the cost, as I understand here, is essentially um zero in the first year and then fifteen hundred years. Sorry, fifteen hundred years, fifteen hundred dollars uh each year after. Um and so. Um I believe Mayor Ireland wanted to raise this issue with council uh to understand whether there is an interest in joining the organization. Um as we were getting prepared for the meeting this afternoon, um and knowing this was coming up, I was. Kind of imagining uh committee could refer this back to administration for a report back. But as I look at the information that Mayor Ireland provided, I don't know that there'd be significantly new information that we'd be able to add. Um as I said, the it does spell out, you know, that the fee in the first year is uh well, they actually say whatever you can afford. And so administration would be able to find some amount to be able to fund that cost and then fifteen hundred year, fifteen hundred dollars each year after. Um and then uh there would be uh there is a agreement um that is attached as well. Um so I don't know if there's additional information that committee would like to see from administration. We could sort of take it away. And bring back additional information or a report or recommendation. But I believe the mayor's intent is to have this uh considered by council and see if there was an interest in Jasper joining the organization. Um and establishing an understanding of what a living wage would be in a Jasper context.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given. Councillor DeMoy.
Well, I'm I'm all in for uh in favor of advancing this. So um you know, I don't know if we need to. Um acknowledge it, receive it and then direct it to council for a decision. But um this thing does require some signatures and I'm not sure if the rest of council wants to support this. I definitely think it's a worthwhile endeavor for our community.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I I do think this is really um neat. I do, I miss see a given, do you know much about the organization?
Um I don't know a ton about the organization specifically. I believe that they uh have a number of uh our municipal colleague. Uh municipal colleagues across the province, members, I think, can more than potentially are. Uh at least one of those two. I think the the concept of living wage, I can speak to a little bit more. Um that idea is uh a calculation of what the cost to live in a community would be to a certain standard. Again, uh you know, the the calculation would describe what that standard is. And in my past experience, I can say that it isn't all about. The front end pay per se. Um and I think there is sometimes some trepidation from employers who think this is. Just a call for higher wages. Um certainly that may be a part of it, but I have seen examples where. Um my past community's living wage number was impacted by the fact that there were municipal services that were available that helped. Reduce the cost of living in that community such as free transit passes, subsidized childcare or free access to recreation. And so. I think the approach again is uh the intent is for there to be a consistent approach. Where you have the ability to objectively compare community to community. And I think that would be really important information for Jasper that has a very unique context uh to establish an understanding of what this looks like. And how our community might differ from others across the province, even as a point of advocacy, the provincial federal governments. Uh or other organizations that can help better help them better understand our context.
Councillor uh Calorampi and then councillor DeMoy.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, uh my and true to Mr. Given. So we said we did adopt this. And so then would it be the association that would supply the uh business in town with a certificate if it chose to. Join and be part of it. Like, how does that work?
I would maybe need to bring back additional information on that specific part of it, but it really is uh it is uh the organization would have a standard. Um and businesses, if they chose to become recognized by needing that standard, whatever it is, that would be up to the business and and sort of their relationship to the. The living wage network. Um as long as the municipality is a member of the network, businesses within the municipality can choose. If they so choose to uh to go through that that recognition. Um so it would be the municipality certifying anybody. It would be up to the business to apply to be certified. And I believe that that's true.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given.
Well, I you know, some of the benefits uh of becoming member, becoming a member on in seventy two and seventy three. If anybody wants to look, but uh you know, to assist advancing this. Uh particular for the mayor that brought this forward in in order to give him an opportunity to speak to it. I would like to move that uh committee recommends to council. Uh that the municipality of Jasper join the Alberta Living Wage Network.
Thank you for that. Councillors. Any other discussion? Alright, there being no further discussion, this will come uh to the council next week. Uh and I have an opportunity for his worship to also uh address this item which was um is on the agenda. So I'll call a question. Uh all those in favor? Thank you much. Uh that is carried. That now takes us to our revised agenda, item seven point five, joint use and planning agreement. Uh the authority to negotiate with um. Um our regional school boards and I believe Mr. Given is that your.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Malick, I'll be speaking this. I believe I'm also backed up by a couple of members of administration. Uh Angela Franklin, Miss Daniel, uh either or both might be uh on the Zoom with us this afternoon. They've done the heavy lifting on the documents, um certainly at the operational end. Jasper has previously had a joint use arrangement with Grand Yellowhead uh School Division. Um and so that's not something that's particularly new to the community. I believe that agreement has expired. Um but more recently, the uh province of Alberta has brought in a legislative requirement. For municipalities to integrate into to joint use agreements uh with the school districts where there are jurisdictional laps. Um so this is no longer an optional thing that is mandated. Uh and we must have an agreement in place by June tenth twenty twenty three. Uh so administration has a draft agreement that's attached to the request for decision. Uh it is modeled off a provincial template um that really speaks to best practice. You can see this um. Uh localized to the Jasper context, recognizing our facilities and school board facilities. And I will say that is school boards. Uh because we do in fact have two school divisions that are. And I will say that it is school boards, because we do in fact have two school divisions that are represented here in Jasper, Grand Yellowhead. And that is our Frankophone School Division, so administration is looking for. Direction from council and committee to forward this attached agreement to school divisions. So we can take it together towards meeting the June deadline to have this agreement in place. At a high level, the agreement spells out roles and responsibilities of the parties, as well as what facilities are available for joint use. So those would be where joint use can be defined is where the municipality and community have access to school. Division facilities and schools and the students in the schools have access to municipal facilities. The overarching principle here is that all of those facilities were paid for by taxpayers in one form or another. And that taxpayers are best served by coordination of those facilities and joint use to ensure that there. There's full access for all members of the community. The document also describes joint use times, what times facilities would be available. Some operating guidelines and a dispute resolution process, there is. I'll bring to council's attention that there is a couple of. Meetings or bodies that are proposed to be established, first at the documented point seven, which is on page twenty four of your combined PDF. Talks about formalizing a meeting between councils and, sorry, council and the boards of the school divisions. That hasn't happened in my time in Jasper, and you can see how all of us working together to serve the same people, that could be useful. It also talks about a governing committee, which would be members of, two members of council and the CAO. And two members of the school division and the superintendent and the permits board. So that governing committee, there would be, there is that commitment of council time there and. Were this agreement to be adopted, then council would identify which councillors that wanted to link to that. And then there's an operating committee which would be at the administration level, which would be comprised of the CAO or designate. And the superintendents or designees of each of the boards to really talk about that frontline, how do how do we actually activate, make it operate. I don't know that there's anything else that I would want to address at this time. I would be happy to answer any questions, and if we had any operational questions, I would hope to be backed up by the rest of our team that's on Zoom. But this is, in essence, a starting point. I know Mayor Ireland had raised a few administrative things that we saw. Minor amendments that would be caught, we're not looking to council to adopt this as is, we're simply looking for council's. Direction to take this away and begin that negotiation process with the school districts, so that we can come back to council with a finalized document. And a recommendation to adopt.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given, councillors, do you have any questions for administration?
I was waiting to see some hands, because I'm I'm not, I'm trying not to be the first person to talk or the last person most of the time, but. I just, I'm happy that this is here and I thank everyone for sticking around. This wasn't my intention to bump this the last, and and by no means that I think of it as less important than the other things that we discussed today. However, I I felt that this was teed up very nicely for us to to move forward. And that's a pretty easy recommendation to make, so, you know, there could be an argument either way, get it out of the way early or, you know, save some room. For later today, so I'm happy this is in front of us and I'm willing to see it get advanced to to council.
Thank you for that. In, in the absence of a question, I do have just a couple of quick questions. There's a reference to disposal of unneeded school sites on page twenty seven of the agenda. Page ninety of the agreement, I would be in the impression there is no such site here in Jasper that. Any land swap that occurred years ago between municipality and Grand Yellowhead, that the lands were fully accounted for.
Deputy Mayor Melon, I think that's probably the case, and I would say that there, you know. Maybe, although it may be difficult to imagine in Jasper context, there may be a time where one of our schools ages out. And then there's a need to replace it, and then the question becomes, well, what happens with that site? Well before my time, I imagine those were some complex negotiations and discussions with what ended up being commemoration park in that square. And so I think the intent here is to build something into the relationship between the school districts and the municipality in advance. Certainly, this is something that is a much more pressing issue in other municipalities where there. Where you will see school districts identify reserve lands in neighborhoods that haven't yet been built. And then fifteen or twenty years down the road, they decide that they want to have some schools somewhere else, and there's this big vacant parcel thing. That said, there may be some utility to having this in there in advance, just thinking about the future. And that's something the administrations of the two, sorry, the three organizations could consider before we bring it back here.
Thank you for that, and one other question relates back to schedule A. Which are the municipal facilities available for joint use, that would be on page thirty three of our agenda. And it specifically omits the gymnastics area and the curling lounge. From the activity center. And I also noticed a log cabin is in there, but I mentioned the log cabin is because we don't know what we're doing with the log cabin as yet. Are the other ones permitted because there are assets that don't belong to the municipality that are that are in there, such as the gymnastic equipment? Is not necessarily municipalities to allow a joint use without a relationship with the gymnastics club?
I think that is one part of it, Deputy Mayor Melon, I think the other part, and maybe more, the the larger portion is that we already have an existing lease agreement. In place with other organizations, third parties for those spaces, and so we've made a commitment to one organization and we can't. Allow that to be overridden by the joint use agreement. If we wish to make those available, then that would be something we'd probably have to reconsider when we go to renegotiate lease agreements with the the third parties that are already there.
Great, thank you very much for that. Councillors, are there any other questions before we move this forward for administration?
Well, I just want to commend you on your astute read of that document and those observations, because I didn't catch that. Paying attention to details, so that's good to have here.
And I think now the next attention to details. Is a motion to get this onto administration's plate to be able to do some good work. Is there a council willing to make that motion, councillor?
The committee directs administration to enter negotiations of the school boards based on the attached draft time use of planning requirements.
Thank you for that, is there any discussion on the motion? There being a motion on the floor, I'll call a question, all those in favor. And that's carried, thank you.
Would that be considered to be with both feet?
Okay, item seven point six, and this would be a motion for Alberta Munis, councillor Keller.
Two weeks ago, at the committee of the whole, we had a discussion on victim services and the non criminal karma. No funding from our provincial government, and at that time we talked about AM. Alberta municipal conference coming up in September, and this kind of just was a placeholder, so it didn't get forgotten that. Coming up, we need to have a discussion on what type of resolutions we want to bring forward at AM this year. And that was one of them, and then there has been some discussion around the state as well about control trends, that maybe that's another one. And thanks to Ms. Akorn, she sent out the schedule, so we will have to make a decision before May thirty first. On what resolutions we want, so basically, it's not, you know, if you want to discuss it today. Or we can ask it, direct administration to bring this back at another committee of the whole. For discussion on what council leaders put in as resolutions.
Certainly appreciate, Deputy Mayor Melon, that the opportunity for council to get this on on the floor. Just so the council aware of the process, there is a deadline for resolutions to May thirty first, and I'd have to. Have to refer to the guidebook to be certain, but there is also a requirement for the resolutions to come forward with a second or municipality. And so that May thirty first deadline, I believe, is sort of the deadline to have it all together, so sort of work that back into council schedules. Council should probably be identifying what issues they they wish to develop resolutions on. Refer that to administration, you could identify those issues and refer to administration for a draft resolution. Because there's a standardized format. And that could either come back to committee of the whole or go to the legislative committee to do a bit of the first cut. Counsel, remember that the scope of the legislative committee does include consideration of resolutions, so you could. Today, you could identify the subject areas that you want to have resolutions on. Refer to administration for a report back to the legislative committee, and that would start that process going, because you would need to get it back ultimately back to council or committee. And then from committee out and and find some other municipalities that wish to join your effort, second your resolution to any meetings. Before May thirty first, so you can appreciate how that timeline will get pretty short, if we're also trying to coordinate with the municipalities.
Well, I I appreciate this coming forward, and I think the two items that, you know, councillor Keller, they just spoke to are are pretty hot ticket. Discussion topics in in Alberta, and I I don't think it'll be difficult, in fact, I. I think that some other communities might be advancing these already, and it might be worthwhile trying to find out who. When it comes down to looking at funding for trauma services. As well as some type of rent control for the province, and I think we've heard stuff in the news about at least the latter. And I think it's worthwhile, at least, you know, for community members, knowing that we were advocating for them. You know, the first one, when it comes to trauma, has an impact on residents, but also visitors here. And then the second one, even though it's out of our jurisdiction, our community members need to know that we're advocating for them, at least. And and we do have a channel, the voice, advancing some of the needs of our community members and fellow Albertans as a whole. To to get this heard in legislature, so I'm in full support of these. And whether, how we advance it to legislative committee or and we're administration and bring it there, I'd like to support that.
Thank you, thank you councillor De Mole, any other councillors? I as well would like to support a motion to move this forward, though if there's an opportunity for a councillor to make a motion to move this into. Administration, councillor Keller.
I'd like to watch that heading direct administration to take forward. Victims of non crime economy funding from the Alberta government and also resolution for rent control for Alberta. And we direct this to administration and legislative. Committee to move through this to topics forward, and and we and. Any other topics that may come up through legislative that we could advance there and then eventually come back to council.
Councillor, sorry, Mr. Given?
Deputy Mayor Melon, I think I heard direct administration developed draft resolutions on victims of crime slash trauma services. And rent control and bring those draft resolutions to the legislative committee for review.
Great, thank you for that, councillors, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, no discussion, motion on the floor, call a question, all those in favor. And that's carried. And we have one other item under new business. Which I believe we can just quickly address, item seven point seven, March twenty eighth. Committee of the whole, there will be at least two of us that will be away. Which could put us close to need not being able to meet in court. But just for a matter of note, the acting mayor, I know councillor Hall will be. Chair in that meeting for administration to to know, and I think that pretty well disposed of that doesn't require any motion. The next thing we have on our agenda. Is a motion action list.
Deputy Mayor Melon, I can speak that briefly, if council would like, you have the existing motion action list, and as I look down, I believe. We can, I recommend the council remove the S block parking item. That was delivered here, and of course, there will be additional work that's coming out of the the motion today, but that item from October eleventh of last year, I think can be deleted. Can be placed with the motions arising from today, we do still have some committee meetings and committee meeting in March still. So there are some additional items that administration still is working to try to bring forward that second committee meeting in March. And all the rest of the items from administration perspective are on track.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given, we're looking for a motion to. Approve the updated motion action list. Is there a council willing to make that motion, councillor Hall, thank you, all those in favor? And that's carried, thank you. Councillor, upcoming meetings, look to the room or anyone who likes to update upcoming meetings.
Last Friday, I attended a trans to every other high rate community meeting, and this Thursday, I would be in in Henson at the everything special in the middle.
Thank you for that. Other councillors, councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I attended a early childhood and school community conversation last Wednesday. And again, I always come out of those meetings just blown away by the people we have in that department that see gaps and fill them. Tuesdays at the library, there we have a program called Let Them Play, and they are looking for old broken technologies, right? It's sad, without here, if anybody has old broken technology, that's it.
Thank you for that. I heard it was broken, and I was thinking, where is this going? So, if there's no other reports, I do have a meeting tonight, which is the monthly Jasper Yellowhead Historical Society meeting. Which I will be in attendance by Zoom. And then on Monday, we'll have the Jasper Yellowstone Historical Society Annual General Meeting. Which will be locally here, and I believe that is advertised, or will be advertised in the fifth U, the Thursday. Right. Upcoming events. Tomorrow morning. Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce has their annual, or sorry, the general meeting between eight, nine thirty at the Wicket Cup. We have two sessions by Parks Canada, the information sessions this week. On land use planning and development, both on Thursday, one in the afternoon and one in the evening. In the Forest Park Hotel Ballroom, and they are encouraging individuals to arrive half an hour before. To be able to register, to participate, and that's one thirty to three thirty and six to eight o'clock on Thursday the sixteenth. Netma on Wednesday the twenty second will be in this room, hosted by the municipality. And then also we have the recycling industry and waste reduction event at the Lobstick on April twenty seventh. Are there any other events that should be added to our upcoming events, councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I would like to add the fourteenth annual Jasper Pride and Ski Festival is coming up, April fourteenth to twenty third. Their website's up and running with lots of incredible events, but specifically Friday the nineteenth, there will be a family story time. Friday the nineteenth, there will be a family story time here at our municipal library, and I would like to challenge my. Council colleagues and senior leadership team to join in the fun in light of the, sure, you've seen protests and. The extreme homophobia in the news, um, with these story times, I think that we could join with our diversity, sparkles, tiara. Um, and I will keep reminding you guys of that one, but I think that would be a good one, if we could attend one as a group. That'd be a good one, that's April fourteenth to twenty-third for the whole festival.
Thank you for that. Counselor Demora.
Well, um, one thing that I was, uh, made aware of by one of the organizers, uh, at our last, uh, community conversations. Um, was that there's going to be a, uh, drag. Storytime for seniors this time around, and I think that's fantastic, so, um, then. There's quite a bit of support around that and looking forward to seeing how that, uh, transpires.
Thank you. Counselors, I have one other, oh, by me.
I I just got a message that the. Chamber meeting has been canceled. At the Wicked Cup, as I just said there. Now, yeah.
So, um. Just moments ago, uh, I had mentioned about the chamber meeting at the Wicked Cup tomorrow, and I like using the phrase that they use on TV. Ladies and gentlemen, we have breaking news, um, and it looks like that the chamber has decided. To, uh, cancel that meeting tomorrow, um, and I'm sure we'll hear from the chamber when when that'll happen again. The last thing I'd like to add to upcoming events is. Uh, during this past week, uh, a number of individuals in Jasper. Were identified, and they received the five hundred dollar grant from, um, Fire Smart. And last year, I believe we had ten. Um, different individuals apply and were successful, this year, I believe the number is either fourteen or fifteen, and just to get it on our radar. The Fire Smart Day currently planned is Sunday, May fourteenth. So, uh, another great event here in the community. Uh, nice to see that support, um, as we move forward, I'm sure. That our Fire Smart representative here in Jasper, which I believe is Frank Van Cheung. Will be organizing meetings prior to and public information session. Counselor Demora.
Well, glad you brought that up, and, uh, I think one of the items that I want to bring forward, because you were in next community conversations. Is, uh, the potential for a Jasper Day, and, uh, just in a side conversation with the mayor, he thought maybe. Uh, you know, community coming together, the Fire Smart Day, uh, might be a good way to incorporate everything together, and it may not need to be a fall event, it could be a spring one, so. That could be a a great way for community to come together before we start getting busy in the summer season, so. Food for thought, um, I'm not taking that iron out of the fire yet, and I'd like to keep promoting that, cause I I think that. We have, uh, an opportunity for, uh, for us to celebrate ourselves and our diversity and our unity too, and I I think. Um, even that on the burner is important.
Thank you very much, Counselor Demora. Um, I'm looking around the room, if there's any other business by counselors. Then, uh, we can entertain a motion to adjourn, Counselor Demora.
Yes, and before we do, uh, I just wanted to say that I had a really good day at council today, and it was great to be involved with. Uh, some really smart people in our community and have healthy debate and come to some pretty cool resolutions, so. Uh, and thank you administration for the great support, I I think we've got a really good thing going here, and I'm, I want to celebrate that too. So, and I moved to adjourn.
Thank you, Counselor, before I call the question, I do would like to thank the. Public who were available for viewing today as well as the support from administration. And, uh, we look forward to weekend meeting next. Tuesday in the afternoon at one thirty for a regular council meeting. With that, we have a motion on the floor. To adjourn, all those in favor. We are adjourned. Thank you again to the public who, uh, were able to join us today.